Good evening and welcome to tonight's... Good evening, good evening. Welcome to tonight's CIP hearing. I wanted everyone to know that we have overflow seating in room 114 across the hall. We also had headphones for translation. So if you need all that, that's available to you. My name is Shebra Evans. I'm the Board President here on Montgomery County School Board, and I will let my colleagues start to introduce themselves. Ms. O'Neal?
Pat O'Neal, District 3, Board Vice President.
Judy Daca, District 1, Member of the Board.
Good evening, Rebecca Smandrowski, District 2. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Hello, everyone. Genetics and Member at Large, thank you all for coming out this evening.
Good evening, Buenas Noches. I'm Carla Silvestre, School Board Member at Large.
Good evening, Brenda Wolf, District 5, Member of the Board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nate Sinbitt, and I'm the Student Member of the Board.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming. Jack Smith, Superintendent.
Good evening, Monifa McKnight, Deputy Superintendent.
Good evening, Andy Zuckerman, Chief Operating Officer. Thank you for being here tonight.
Tonight is the first of three nights that we have set aside to hear from PTAs, municipalities, civic organizations, and interested individuals on the Superintendent's recommended fiscal year, FY 2021 capital budget, and the FY 2021 through 2026 capital improvements program. The Board will hold hearings tonight, on Thursday, November 7, and on Wednesday, November 13, to hear public comments on the Superintendent's recommendations. On November 18, the Board will hold a hearing solely for the community to provide testimony on the district-wide boundary analysis that is currently underway. If alternatives are passed during either of the Board's work sessions, the Board will hold a hearing on November 20. If no alternatives are passed, there will be no need to hold a hearing on November 20. Anyone interested in testifying should continue to go online to sign up to speak during the scheduled hearings. As always, Board members are looking forward to hearing and giving thoughtful consideration to your testimony. The Board is scheduled to take final action on these matters at its meeting on Tuesday, November 26, which begins at 5:30 p.m. The order of speakers is printed on the agenda, available on the table at the door. When a speaker begins, a green light will go on. Thirty seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. The red light and a buzzer will sound, signal that the speaker's time has expired and the speaker is not to continue beyond this point. We have many community members here tonight who will be testifying this evening. We ask speakers to be respectful to all who have signed up to testify to the hearing and adhere to the time limits. Stop your testimony when the buzzer sounds. All speakers have been requested to provide their testimony in advance. If you have not provided your testimony, please do so in advance and provide 20 copies. Our stats at the right, right here on the auditorium. If you are scheduled to speak, I would ask that you move to the front when the person before you is called to the podium. In this way, we can expedite the hearing. At this point, we will begin. And our first speaker is Judd Ashman, Mayor of the City of Gaithersburg.
Good evening, President Evans, Members of the Board, MCPS staff. As Shebra mentioned, I am Judd Ashman, Mayor of Gaithersburg, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the city. My testimony is going to focus on the main two clusters that serve Gaithersburg, Quince Orchard and Gaithersburg. And I'm going to start with a big thank you for fully funding, or at least proposed fully funding, the new Crown High School, which will alleviate overcrowding in the mid-county region. Fourteen years ago, when we approved the Crown development, the City of Gaithersburg required that the developer dedicate the 32-acre site for this proposed high school, and it's going to be wonderful to see it become a reality. We will continue to work as a close partner as this project moves forward for an anticipated completion date of September 2025. Moving on to the Quince Orchard Cluster, as you've heard from me many times at this podium, we remain concerned about the overcrowding at Rachel Carson Elementary School as it is still over-enrolled by more than 200 students with 11 relocatable classrooms in place to address the situation. The anticipated completion date of the DeFefef Elementary School addition is September 2022, and moving some of the Carson students to DeFefef is a start, and we're grateful for the project. But ultimately, we believe it won't be all we need in the long term. The city strongly believes that a new elementary school must be programmed for the QO cluster in order to adequately serve our community. In-field development projects exist in the Kentlands Commercial District, and these are likely to create several thousand new housing units over the next 10 years, potentially generating an entire elementary school worth of students, and then some. Moving to the Gaithersburg Cluster, we are grateful to see Gaithersburg Cluster Elementary School Number 8 as is recommended for construction funding. As you know, the city has been asking for more capacity in this cluster for more than a decade, and while this school won't fix everything, it will make a big dent in helping relieve overcrowding at five other elementary schools. The Council and I have authorized our city manager to negotiate the terms for MCPS use of the land at Kelly Park for this new school. Obviously, there has been some pushback from those who live close to the park. If this project is going to move forward, it's important to address the concerns of the community, including additional safety measures and traffic management and minimizing the impact on public use of the park. We look forward to those discussions. Now, as you know, for these last 20 years, the community around Kelly Park has had to live next door to a school, Forest Oak Middle School, that their kids don't attend. I wasn't involved back then, so I don't know exactly what all went into drawing that boundary. But if and when we move forward with GES Number 8, we are going to be particularly sensitive to the boundary study and strongly advocate that MCPS take the approach of maximizing walkers. If there were a way to guarantee this ahead of time, it would make our negotiations a lot simpler. We'd also love to have middle school boundaries revisited during the process with the hope of perhaps healing that 20-year-old wound. Finally, we want to once again call your attention to Summit Hall Elementary School, which was built in 1971. Program capacity of 457, but with an enrollment of 700, more than 700 students. Seventeen portables, serving a population that includes many families with limited resources. Assuming that the boundary study for GES Number 8 is scoped to include all or most of the Gaithersburg Cluster elementaries, Summit Hall should see some relief. But it's unlikely to be enough. The school's in desperate need of renovations to its antiquated infrastructure and overcrowded conditions. It remains a huge priority for our city, and we will continue to advocate for this until Summit Hall gets back on the REVEX schedule. All of our students deserve a learning environment that is safe and functional. We ask every consideration be given to ensure that our youth receive the highest quality education possible in facilities that reflect our collective commitment to excellence. Thank you all for your stellar work and all you do for the students in Montgomery County.
Thank you. We will now hear from Jerome J. Klobucharowski, President of Commissioners of the Town of Poolsville.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, Board Members, and MCPS Staff Members. I'm Jerry Klobucharowski, the President of the Poolsville Commissioners, representing Poolsville and the heart of Montgomery County's Agricultural Reserve, Poolsville citizens, the citizens of Western Montgomery County whose children attend the Poolsville Cluster Schools, as well as outer-clustered parents whose children attend the Poolsville High School pole magnet. With Veterans Day approaching, let me say thank all the veterans who honor their courage and commitment and have helped preserve our country. And for those who have served and are currently serving, which allows me to stand here today, to those in harm's way especially and their families, may God bless them and protect them. The Poolsville Commissioners, its residents, and the residents of Western Montgomery County are cautiously optimistic with the inclusion of Poolsville High School in the recommended FY 2021 to 2026 capital improvement budget. To paraphrase Sir Winston Churchill, "We understand it is not the beginning, it is not the end, but it is the beginning of a process which will lead to a new 21st-century Poolsville High School, a new high school which will prepare our students for their future academic endeavors and career choices." While recognizing that the $71 million is insufficient for a complete build-out of a new high school, we endorse the recommended FY 2021-2026 capital improvement budget. Therefore, the Commissioners, our Western Montgomery County, Poolsville Western Montgomery County community, will be your partner to work with county and state officials to advocate for additional funds necessary to ensure that a new high school is built and becomes a reality in 2024. We ask that MCPS collaborate with the other county departments and agencies to design, to accommodate, a co-located Western Montgomery County Community Center with a health clinic which will serve our students and area residents. This would achieve a synergy of county and state resources to meet our original goal of a new Poolsville High School. Although the capital improvements needs of our other Poolsville Cluster schools listed in Attachment 1 are not as costly as a new high school, however, they are important to the safety, security, habitability of those schools, and we ask that they not be forgotten and be addressed. Our community has brought a multifaceted solution to meet the needs of our students and residents, but to accomplish above, we will, above will take, to happen, above all will be leadership. Continued leadership on the part of Dr. Smith and the Board members, leadership by the county executive, and leadership by the county council. Some may say this is too difficult. We say every difficulty presents a myriad of opportunities. Let's join together and make this a reality. Thank you for this opportunity to raise these issues with you, and let me wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, happy Hanukkah, and a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Carrie Cook, Commissioners of the Town of Poolsville.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Cook. I'm also here to represent what I think is the best town in Maryland, Poolsville. Like all of you, and probably everyone in this room, I spend a lot of time working for the betterment of my community. I work for the people of Poolsville as a Commissioner. I work for the parents of the Poolsville Cluster as a former PTA leader and an MCC PTAer. I work towards the betterment of young children at a preschool in the county. I work towards sustainability for all of us. I sit on boards, I go to committee meetings, and I come to hearings. And yet, none of this work comes anywhere close to the most important job that I have, and that is being a parent and an education advocate for my two daughters who will graduate high school, the class of 2024 and the class of 2026. I was elated to hear the news last week that our dear, sweet, almost 70-year-old Poolsville High School was recommended for a major capital improvement. We know that planning funds are limited, and I encourage these funds for fiscal year 2021. Our community looks forward to the $71 million allocated for PHS. We stand behind you. We will continue to implore you to replace the entire facility with a modern one that my daughters and all of our children really do deserve. Our Cluster Coordinator is here tonight to present on the needs of the other schools in our community as well, so I will just keep this short and sweet. I wanted to say thank you, Board of Education. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for hearing us, for including us at the table. I'm eager to work with you. I know many, many others in Poolsville are as well. And if you will indulge me and turn around, here's just a small sampling of the folks in a video message of thanks from Poolsville.
Thank you, MCPS, for prioritizing my high school.
So we are super excited that you've made Poolsville High School a priority.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Thanks, Dr. Smith.
Thanks for building us this new high school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thanks for building us a high school.
Great decision, Board of Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, MCPS.
Thank you, MCPS.
Poolsville wins!
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we will hear from our students. Our first student that we will hear from is Sonia Thanakat. You may go. You can go.
Dear Dr. Smith and distinguished members of the Board of Education, my name is Sonia Thanakat. I'm co-president of the SGA at Neelsville Middle School. I am here today to ask the Board to please approve Dr. Smith's recommendation for a brand-new Neelsville Middle School. I would also like to thank Dr. Smith for our new Neelsville Middle School sign at the front of our building. Over the last three years, things at Neelsville have continued to deteriorate. One of the main concerns is that students still do not feel safe and secure at Neelsville. Brianna will elaborate on that right after me. Our leaking skylight got fixed, but the solution took away most of the main source of natural light we have at our school. Teachers in classrooms with no windows, as in a lot of the classrooms, have put up art or fake painted windows to feel like there is some connection to the outside world. We still have four lunch blocks that was started last year, but with long wait times for food, it doesn't always give students enough time to eat. The closest bathrooms to the cafeteria has one stall for girls, one stall for boys, and one stall for staff. Many of our classrooms are loud and overcrowded. There are even classrooms without enough desks for all the students to use. In 6th grade, we had a weight room with equipment that was used for gym classes, but in order to create more classrooms, we lost our weight room, and the main gym is divided for two classes to share. We don't have an elevator to accommodate students with crutches or wheelchairs. We have a very long, winding, dangerous ramp that isn't in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. There are many, many more issues at Neelsville that can't be covered in three minutes. I'm here today because I believe that every student deserves a great facility to learn in, but it's clear we don't have that at Neelsville when students from not just our school, but other schools have called us the prison on the hill. What happens won't affect me, but I don't want future kids to have to put up with the same issues I did. This new facility is essential to creating a more positive learning environment than Neelsville. So I asked the Board to please approve the fiscal year 2020 budget for a new Neelsville Middle School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Brianna Akumoa-Bolting.
Dear Dr. Smith and the distinguished members of the Board, my name is Brianna Akuma-Bolting, and I'm the other co-president of Neelsville's SGA. Neelsville is extremely appreciative that we are being recommended for this funding for our new school, but we desperately need it to be secured for us. The staff and safety, the staff and student safety is constantly at risk when it comes to entering our building. All you have to do to get in is press a button for the office to open the door. But where the office is positioned, they can't even see who is coming in, meaning virtually anyone at any time can enter our building. And despite it being a sensitive topic, school shootings are becoming a prevalent occurrence, with over 20 already happening this year. Our safety is on the line, and we can't stay defenseless anymore. Outside security aside, the inside of our school also needs a major security improvement. The exits of our building are fire hazards because in case of emergency, we cannot all be filed out in a safe amount of time. Furthermore, as Sonia stated, we do not have enough bathrooms to accommodate all of our students, which is severely unhygienic. This year, we actually instilled a rule for our upper floor to be used as a one-way hallway because in the years prior, there was an intersection that got so filled up every time the bell rang that it cost countless stalemates and was the perfect place if you wanted to be trampled or hurt. The one-way hallway doesn't completely fix this either. When your class is hardly across the hall but you have to go all the way around to reach it, students are certainly running the moment the bell rings, leaving everyone in their wake an obstacle that will be hurt in the process. Lastly, I want you to imagine having hundreds of students walking a single hallway, being packed like a can of sardines, being herded like cattle in one direction. This cramped and stuffy atmosphere isn't a suitable learning environment. A school is stressing enough without having to worry how badly you're going to be hurt every time the bell rings. Neelsville is a safety hazard to all of its students and staff and will continue to be one until we are fixed. Please take that into consideration. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Monica Dodnick. Okay. So we'll come back to her later. Sarah Insasadio.
Good evening, Board of Education, President Evans, Dr. Smith, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Sarah Insasadio, and I'm a fifth grader at South Lake Elementary School. I have been attending South Lake since I was in pre-K. I'm also here with Action in Montgomery, and more than 60 people. What I love most about South Lake are the teachers and the staff. Every morning, Ms. King, Mr. McKinley, or Mrs. Levy stop by my classroom to say good morning, which makes us feel special. Everyone who works at South Lake, from our secretaries to the building services staff to the cafeteria staff, all work hard to keep our school clean and safe. I want to thank Dr. Smith for recommending that we get a new school building. Board of Education members, I hope you will support his recommendations. I'm here today knowing that if we get a new school building, I will not get to use it. But my younger sister Sadia, who is almost four years old, should get a chance to learn and play and grow in a new school. My school is so small that there are not enough pre-K classes. With a new building, we could have more pre-K classes so Sadia could start pre-K. I would also like her to have a nice playground. Right now, the pre-K playground is the size of our art room and is mostly paved, except for one small section with wood chips. I want Sadia to be able to use bathrooms that do not smell and not work, and I do not want her to have to walk all the way to a different bathroom, because the first one is not working. I know how it feels to walk back to class and miss out on the lesson only to have, to stay in during recess to make it up, just because the bathrooms do not work or are far away. My younger brother's class is downstairs. We have 10 portables in the back of the school building. My brother has asthma, but his classroom is so far away from the health room, that if he were to have an asthma attack, it would be challenging to get him his inhaler. Our health room is one-third the size of what is recommended for a school with 897 students. I want my younger sisters and brother, and all the other younger students at South Lake to have access to a health room that meets their needs. I want Sadia and her friends, all the students in our younger grades, all of my teachers, our building services staff, and our cafeteria staff, our secretaries, and Mr. McKinley, Mrs. Levy, and my principal, Ms. King, to have a better school. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open it up to board questions, I want to just acknowledge all of the MCPS staff that's in the audience. If you could either stand, or if you're standing, raise your hand, wave your hand. Just want to acknowledge you. Very good. And so I will start with Mr. Tenbite. Do you have any questions, comments?
No questions, but I did want to say thank you to all of the students that definitely testified. You guys were very vocal and did a great job.
Ms. Wolf.
I'd also like to thank the students that have come forward to testify, and I would like to ask, is Andy there, a question about Nielsville and the, the safety question that they're raising about whether or not they have a safety vestibule for injuring the school.
So Nielsville is, is recommended for a major capital project, um, and, and essentially a tear down and rebuild, so there will be a new vestibule as a part of that, and we will look to see what interim measures we can take.
Mrs. O'Neil. Dr. Daka.
No, I was just going to ask about the safety and security. I've been there many times. I know about that ramp. And, uh, but they call it the prison on the hill? I've never heard that before. I'm so sorry.
Mrs. Mondraski.
So I too, just want to say, um, thank you to our students for coming out. It really is, I think I can pretty fairly say, our favorite part of testimonies, but, and very impressive. I think you memorized that whole speech, so that was amazing. I was like, where is she reading this from? So, um, well done. Um, and I appreciate the fact that you shared your thoughts. We're looking forward to making sure that we get Nielsville and all of our, you know, whatever is in our CIP done, but just prison thing was very, just.
Ms. Dixon.
So I'd like to thank our students as well for coming out this evening. I'd also like to just thank the folks from Poolsville for the little video and just the thank you. That was very nice and very thoughtful. Actually, Seth and I were talking about that yesterday, and so now we have one. There you go.
Ms. Sevstra.
Just had a question about Summit Hall Elementary School. Dr. Zuckerman, I, I think I misheard. How many relocate, relocatable classrooms are there at Summit Hall?
I'm going to ask Mr. Adams to go into a little greater detail, because we have a modular structure there, which I think he can explain to the group, um, and then what goes into that.
Good evening. So, a little bit of feedback here. So, uh, Summit Hall is one of the few schools that we piloted a modular portable building. So they essentially have two, eight classroom buildings with interior restrooms and, and other facilities, but it's a total of 16 classrooms that are part of modular structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that concludes our questions. We will go on to our next speaker, um, under our students, Gabriella Chulik.
Good evening, School Board. Let me introduce myself. My name is Gabriella Chulik. I am a sister from a really big family on my mom's Dominican side and my dad's side too. I am a fourth grader in Spanish, in the Spanish immersion program at Burt Mills Elementary School. I came here tonight to talk about how I really want to change our school. I also came because I wanted to meet, to speak to the school board members and meet you. First, let me tell you what I love about Burt Mills. My school is really fun. I love my teacher, Ms. Santos. I have great friends who stand up for me. I really like the watchdogs program at our school, where your dads come to school. My dad came, and it was so much fun to have my dad at recess with me. I also really like my principals, Dr. Ashton and Vice Principal, Mr. Clark. We need a new school building at Burt Mills. I absolutely do not like the portables. The rooms are small, they are really hot in the summer, and I'm worried it's going to be really cold in the winter. The vents are very loud when the teacher is trying to teach, or when we're trying to concentrate on a test. It echoes a lot, making it hard to hear. It's hard to go to the bathroom, because we have to go two people at a time. There are sometimes long lines in the bathroom waiting for all the kindergarteners, and some people who want, really want to go can't. The bathrooms smell like pee and sometimes overflow with water. It's not the school's fault. Hundreds of kids are using small bathrooms meant for only a few classrooms. Our school is 51% overcapacity. We eat lunch at 10:55, which is too early. Some students eat lunch right after breakfast, when they aren't hungry yet. There is no music room, so for musical instrument class, we have to use the stage to practice. There is only a curtain between us and the cafeteria. It must be hard for the students to concentrate when we're eating lunch and their class is happening on the stage. The stage is also a storage space for all sorts of things. In the room where I wrote the speech, the air conditioner was being held together with tape and propped up on boards. There is not central heating or air. Tiles were falling off the wall. There were tables and chairs and boxes on both sides of the hallway, because there's not enough storage. School Board, I hope that you follow Superintendent Smith's recommendations to build a new school building for Burt Mills. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Charlotte Hendricks.
My name is Charlotte Hendricks, and I am in the fourth grade at Stonegate Elementary School. I love my school. We have wonderful teachers and staff, and I've made so many friends over the years. We also have some great programs at our school, like the C, like CES or LFI. I'm a CES student, and I was an LFI buddy last year. But my school is really old, and we need a new building. That's why I'm so happy to hear that we're going to get a new one. Thank you. Even though I won't be there for the new building, the future stu, the future students deserve to have one, so they won't have to learn in a portable, because it isn't safe to have students outside. When I was in second grade, my class was in a portable, and we had to go inside just to use the bathroom. That isn't safe or fair. So I'm really grateful that Stonegate will get a better building. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you. We will now hear from Noah Johnson.
Good evening, President Evans and members of the Board. My name is Noah Johnson, and I am a senior at Blake High School, a fine arts signature school. I am the drum major for the Roaring Bengals March Band. I also played a saxophone in Blake's Jazz Ensemble. Blake Music has taught me many things in addition to expertise in the saxophone. As a drum major, I've learned how to be an effective leader. I enjoy working with underclassmen and motivating them to do their best. Together, we recognize the importance of giving all that you have to your music, that even if we are tired, we must discipline ourselves and strive to improve each performance. I've also learned the value of working with different kinds of people into our Blake Music family. We appreciate our differences and respect each other, which contributes to our excellence. The feeling of family can be seen at our varsity football games, where Blake Music alumni join us with their instruments and play like they are all still at Blake, with our teachers joining in also. It is a very moving experience. We are concerned, however, about the lack of resources for band and orchestra. The band must practice on an outdoor basketball court, because there is no field for us to use. The court is small, unlighted, without power for electronic instruments. Inside, we do not have enough storage space, nor do we have an adequate supply of linnable instruments that students could borrow to learn how to play or, play a new or different instrument. More important, our main stage at Blake has substandard lighting and sound. The stage lights only display the middle section of the band or orchestra as the students perform, not the sides. The sound system is obsolete, ill-suited to the nuances of our instruments. Our facility simply cannot support our outstanding instrumental music program, and we struggle to maintain our reputation as one of the finest music schools in MCPS due to lack of resources. Our teachers are top-notch and respected across the county for their musical knowledge and leadership. Our instrumental groups regularly earn superior ratings at state assessment festivals. Blake hosts several events each year where school music groups can perform and receive quality feedback on the performances from seasoned music educators. Blake recently organized an inaugural county marching band showcase, hosting eight or other high school bands for afternoon of marching and music, culminating in a show with all the bands playing together. Our school leads the way in music education across the county. Nevertheless, we cannot sustain this level of excellence without additional resources to update and modernize our spaces for practices, rehearsals, and performances. We ask that you help us continue to be a successful, influential school that serves a diverse population of students looking to start a career in music, or just learning to appreciate music in their lives as they work in other fields. We are proud of our signature program and hope that you value it as well. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Cameron Lang.
Hello, my name is Cameron Lang. This year, I'm a fifth grader at Stonegate Elementary. I started at Stonegate when I was in kindergarten six years ago. For the past two years, I've been in the Center for Enrich Studies. I've also been SGA secretary and an LFI buddy, and I'm a safety patrol. I like Stonegate because of the staff, especially Principal Jones and Assistant Principal Thompson. I also enjoy learning with my fellow students. We have a lot of exciting events at the school, like multicultural night, the science fair, talent show, and the spelling bee. And our teachers strive to motivate us to do our best. Despite all the good things about Stonegate, there are also some downsides to the school. First, we had mold in some of our classrooms, including the media center, which can later lead to health issues for students and could cause problems for our building. Second, our school is so crowded that all of fifth grade are in portables, along with ESOL, instrumental music, and music class. To go to the bathroom, we have to use a pass or turn to the main building. This cuts into our learning time. Also, our portable classroom itself is super small, and we have 28 people learning in it. Next, we have problems with regulating the temperature in our portables. Just yesterday, the thermostat malfunctioned, and the temperature went down to 50 degrees. We all had to wear coats. Finally, in the main building, some of the classrooms were so hot in past years that teachers had to keep the lights off and blow fans into the classroom to keep it cool. All of these problems make it harder for us to learn, especially with our difficult curriculum. That's why I'm thankful that the Board approved the capital project for Stonegate. I think Stonegate can and will be a healthier learning environment for the students and staff throughout the improvements, which will be great for our community. I'm so happy that future generations of kids in our neighborhood will have the opportunity to learn in the newer, better Stonegate Elementary. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Nick Asante.
Good evening, Board President Evans, Superintendent Smith, these esteemed members of the Board of Education, my fellow students who all testified tonight, and everyone else who came out tonight. My name is Nick Asante, and I'm a junior at Richard Montgomery High School. Recently, Superintendent Smith released his suggested capital improvement program through 2026, and I applaud the inclusion of schools that are in desperate needs of renovations and expansions, such as Poolsville and Ronald McNair, my former elementary school. Now, in addition to this new plan, I would also like to express my support for the option 11A in relation to the new Up County boundaries that will follow the opening of the new Seneca Valley High School. Despite attending Richard Montgomery, I currently live in the Northwest Boundary, and believe that this recommendation will best serve my area. As I've grown up in the Germantown-Clarksville area, it has been quite evident that, to me, that the location boasts a diverse range of students with different backgrounds, different perspectives, and different stories. As I mentioned, I attended Ronald McNair Elementary School, and later Roberto Clemente Middle School, but with experiences helped me connect to cultures that were not my own. They afforded me the opportunity to meet people I would have otherwise never met had I lived in a homogeneous community and attended homogeneous schools. Because I attended diverse schools in a diverse community, I've been able to grow as a person and empathize with people who have faced adversities wildly different than those that I have faced and will encounter throughout the rest of my life. In fact, my current network of friends contains people of many unique backgrounds, and, as we all learn from one another, and share our individual stories. It's a rich mixture of varying cultures and experiences that makes my community so amazing, and I believe that it's only fitting that the schools in our area further showcase this diversity. With option 11A, we see a more equitable distribution of Farms and ESOL students amongst the Northwest, Seneca Valley, and Clarksville High Schools. We see the racial makeup of each school being more evenly dispersed than ever before. We see one of the greatest boundary plans brought forth to our Board in the history of our county's educational system. With option 11A, we see progress, necessary progress. The adoption of this boundary plan would not only set a standard for other boundaries in our county, but for school systems across the nation. Our county prides itself in being one of the best school systems in the United States, and it's our responsibility as a county to be the frontrunner in a national fight to create a more tolerant and accepting world. And the best way for the Board of Education to do so is by establishing these boundaries that promote equity and diversity. So, Board members, I strongly, I strongly urge that you all vote in favor of Superintendent Smith's recommendation on November 26th, because it's a step in the right direction on our fight towards progress, tolerance, and equity. Thank you.
At this time, we will hear from Bronwyn Weigert.
Good evening, Mrs. Evans and Board members. My name is Bronwyn Weigert. I am a senior at Blake High School, and I have been active in the signature arts at Blake for all four years. I am a member of Blake's acapella choir, have been the president of the Triumph Music Honor Society for three years, and have successfully earned a place in Montgomery County Youth Chorus, the Maryland All-State Chorus, and proudly represented the state of Maryland on, in the All Eastern Chorus. I have also performed in each Blake Stage Company production since freshman year. Blake's extremely talented music teachers production since freshman year. Blake's extremely talented music teachers helped bring me to this point, and certainly, this signature school was the perfect choice for me. Tonight, I am here to speak specifically about our choral program. Our teachers are, in a word, outstanding. They are so supportive and fiercely dedicated to our education and music. Last year, for instance, they secured a spot for us at the Barbershop Harmony Society's Junior Chorus Invitational, where we sang on the stage of the Grand Old Opry in Nashville, winning first place in our category. Maybe you saw us featured on NBC4 last spring. The most memorable part of the trip for me was spending the previous summer with our teachers singing at various barbershop chapter meetings and making enough money in donations to fully fund our whole trip. That way, no one had to miss it due to cost. Such an amazing experience, an example of the equity embedded in our arts program. Nevertheless, it is distressing to mention a number of problems we face in keeping our program in the top tier at MCPS. Our greatest concern is the situation with our main stage, the space we perform on most. For example, for the past two years, before our Cluster concerts in the fall with our theater schools, our teachers have had to scramble at the last minute to fix problems with the lighting when they should be concentrating on getting the students ready. The light panels shine too brightly on the students in the middle, as Noah said, and not at all on the students standing on either end. Our sound system is terribly antiquated and does not capture the harmonies distinctly. Too often, we are unsure if everything will be operating appropriately for our performances, leaving us anxious. In addition, we have a great need for adequate and updated rehearsal and performance space. More room for storage off the music hallway would eliminate the need to store our risers in the teaching space, which is now overcrowded. Because of our aging HVAC system, our choral room and music technology lab are either uncomfortably warm or too cold. Neither temperature is conducive to instruction. Blake's signature work cannot continue successfully with these impediments in place. We ask that you work with us to renovate our spaces that are in continual use by all of our signature arts areas in keeping with your plans for building a new performing arts high school, so that our diverse population in the Northeast Consortium continues to enjoy the benefits of a strong arts program. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Eva Salins.
Good evening, Chairwoman Evans and members of the board. My name is Eva Salins. I am a senior and I wear two hats at Blake's signature program. I am the assistant drum major for the Roaring Bengals Marching Band, where I also play the tuba. Tonight, I am speaking in my role as the sound manager for Blake Stage Company. The fine arts focus at Blake has allowed me to be a leader and expand my love for music. I have had the opportunity to explore the theater world backstage after performing as an actor for eight years in community theater. I learned how to construct sets, paint scenery, wire cables, and work with electrics, skills that I can use in any field as an adult. I chose Blake solely for its arts signature so I could further my passion for music and theater in a school where the arts are the main focus. I must tell you, however, of the problems we face when we put on our productions. To be blunt, our main stage is barely functioning. We have to do a number of Band-Aid maneuvers before a show. We have to try and rejigger the light panels so they don't overilluminate certain characters and leave others in the dark. We have invested in a small number of new mics, but we still must rely on old ones that can be staticky at times. As the student most responsible for sound, I feel anxious when one of our actor's songs is broken up by feedback from a mic. It is difficult to maintain our reputation as one of the finest stage companies in MCPS with these issues constantly reoccurring. We have asked for someone from MCPS to visit Blake and examine these problems, but have been unsuccessful thus far. With respect to our dance studio, the flooring is quite old now. We have borders coming off the wall and a wood floor that is falling at an incline by the edges. We need a new floor. Regarding our visual arts area, only one kiln can be run at a time due to needed electrical upgrades, and a lack of ventilation is tremblesome for both ceramics and photography. Our fashion students do not have an adequate supply of materials and they have to work in halls in order to maintain productivity. Blake's HVAC system must be overhauled. Blake has run a highly popular summer theater program for middle and high school age students in the summer years, but those plans are in jeopardy because our buildings' temperatures are in the mid-80s in the summer months. As the consortium's signature art school, we believe that MCPS is doing a disservice to students like me who choose Blake due to a significant lack of funding for resources for key facilities necessary to our arts program. Our spaces for rehearsals and performances in our classrooms need targeted renovations as soon as possible. Thus, while we support in concept MCPS providing funding for new art spaces such as at Woodward, we do not believe that such a plan should move forward without also modernizing our school as well. Thank you, Ms. Evans and Board members, for this opportunity to testify for Blake High School.
Thank you. We will now hear from Madeline Corey.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Madeline Corey and I am a freshman at Damascus High School. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of every student who goes to Damascus right now and every student who will go to Damascus, including my four younger brothers and sisters. You all have a great opportunity to make a difference in the students' education, and it starts with the approval of the budget to renovate our school. The cry for major improvements at DHS gets a little louder every time I inch my way up crowded staircases that are less wide than I am tall. Especially on the second floor, there are several choke points where multiple hallways, staircases, classroom entrances, and elevators are all smashed together within a 10-foot radius. Besides posing a possible safety hazard, it also makes it hard to simply get to class on time. As a freshman, the narrow hallways aren't confusing enough. When I first came to Damascus High School, I couldn't even find the main office because it isn't near any of the school's entrances. In the following weeks, my friends and I struggled to find places to meet up that weren't in the middle of the hallways because we don't have modern gathering spaces where students can simply meet up or do schoolwork. In addition, the recent Key Facility Indicator Data Study documents that our school's plumbing, electrical, interior finishes, and more are at the end of their lifespan. Our school hasn't been renovated since 1978. The building that should be a welcoming learning environment is too outdated to make anyone feel at home. My brothers and sisters will one day attend Damascus High School, just like me. Neither they nor their peers deserve to learn in a building that is falling apart at the seams. The Capital Improvements Program renovation plan has the potential to change the high school experience for thousands of students at DHS. With its approval, comes a better future for our school and community. Please support the superintendent's $95 million recommendation for Damascus High School renovation and building addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Kate Lanham.
Hi and good evening. My name is Kate Lanham and I am a senior and the SGA president at Damascus High School. For years, the Damascus community has been advocating for the renovation of Damascus High School. Our last renovation was 41 years ago in 1978. While there have been minor cosmetic improvements over the years, no substantial improvements have been done to update or expand our school. It has been made clear to me over the past four years through the lack of upkeep and attention placed on our school that Damascus High School is not a priority of MCPS. While my three-minute time limit will not allow me to go into the details of all of my concerns, two examples are as follows. First, the crowded hallways. In between classes each day, the hallways are clogged and overcrowded due to their narrow and outdated build. With an increase in students, this issue has become more apparent to both myself and my peers. At times, you become stuck in the hallway, unable to move forward, concerned about getting to class on time. Second, the location of our main office. The main office is not centrally located to our main entrance. This past summer, MCPS created a center at the entrance to the school where outsiders have to check in and show their I ID. While this lessens security concerns, it does not fully address them, with outsiders being allowed deeper access into our school. In today's era, security is a main concern, and the location of our main office is alarming to our entire school. These issues have a large impact on the quality of the overall educational experience. When traveling to other MCPS high schools, it is obvious that there are alarming differences: large hallways, first-class sports facilities, modern classrooms, centrally-located main offices, and more. We have received red dot scores in the latest Key Facility Indicator study for art conditions being at the end, meaning the time to act is now. This makes one wonder that at a time when MCPS holds equity and equality up as its core values, if these values apply to Damascus High School. Please support the recommendations of the superintendent to redo our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Hank Breen. And I'm not seeing him. Okay, sounds good. Now, we will hear from Logan Lewis. And I don't see Logan Lewis. Let's go back to, is Monica Goddick here? We missed her earlier. Okay. So, seeing none, I will now open it up for board questions. We will start with Ms. Wolf.
No questions, thank you.
Ms. O'Neill.
So, the issue of the Blake performing art spaces, I know it's not necessarily in the capital budget, but can we have someone take a look at the situation?
Sure. We've already started looking at the questions around instruments and on instrumental music, and we'll certainly take a look at the performance and rehearsal spaces and the other issues to do with the production amenities.
Dr. Daca?
Yeah, I have the same question about the sound, the sound and lighting there. Damascus, well, I know that you're working on it, but the main office is in a strange place and it's a diddle, so we're looking forward to some changes there. Please let the principal and staff know any small things that we're going to do in the meantime. Thank you.
Ms. Modrowski.
Dr. Smith answered my question about the art spaces. I had a question about Stonegate Elementary. I know the mold issues was mentioned. I think that's concerning.
Yeah, so we're working closely with Principal Jones in the sequin jacket out there, and we will continue to engage with the Stonegate leadership team just around intermediate steps that need to be taken. We are wrapping our arms around that school between now and when we do the major capital project, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Ms. Dixon.
Yeah, I have the same questions that Ms. O'Neill had about Blake and the instrumental music program, and also whether maybe Dr. Statham could follow up with the principal about the use of the fields. It sounds to me like that's just a scheduling issue in terms of sharing so that the band can practice.
Ms. Sebastian? Oh, well, can we come back to you after Ms. Sebastian asks a question? Ms. Sebastian, no question? Okay, so Dr. Daca, go ahead.
I want to congratulate the students who were at Blake for the Grand Old Opry. It's, that's a big deal.
All right, so now we can move to the next portion of our agenda where we will hear from cluster coordinators.
Dr. Smith, or Nate, I'm sorry, Nate, I forgot all about you.
It's all good. I definitely wanted to applaud all the students who came here to testify on a Tuesday night. I think that you all deserve one more round of applause for testifying today. So, thank you for that once again.
Okay, so we will proceed with our next speaker, Lynn Harris, MCCPTA president.
Good evening, President Evans, Dr. Smith, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you again for granting me the privilege of speaking to you about the organizational CIP priorities of MCCPTA. You'll hear about specific priorities and needs of our 208 schools from students and parents and community leaders and from cluster leaders, and my responsibility is to share with you some of the overarching Jermaine County-wide priorities that have come up in our numerous meetings across the county since the start of the fiscal year. First, though, I want to again acknowledge the powerful student voices and student leaders of our school system. One of MCCPTA's priorities since April of 2017 has been partnering with and supporting the student voice in our system because I truly believe the lived experience of our students in our schools must be the foundation of every decision that we make as a system. They know things about our schools that nobody else does, and if they are not present and powerfully substantively present when we make every decision affecting them, we are not making the best decisions that we can. And I applaud our move as a system away from making decisions about students to making decisions with students. And I'm also very appreciative of all of the effort and work that MCPS and the board has put into engaging our communities on a wide array of issues affecting our schools and our communities. You make us part of the conversation in ways that are utterly foreign to most school systems in the country. I think we take that for granted, and I just wanted to express our appreciation for the way that you deeply value engaging with us and partnering with us when we make decisions. So, that said, some of the common themes, priorities, and ideas that have come up in MCCPTA's countywide work with school communities this year have included, among other things and in no particular order, coming up with a way to standardize and simplify the system of submitting school-based maintenance requests so that efficiently addressing school-based issues doesn't depend on a highly tech-savvy building services manager or a principal becoming a de facto building engineer. Also, improving and standardizing our maintenance practices so that students waiting a long time for large-scale building improvements in suboptimal learning environments are made as safe and comfortable as possible in the interim. It's important. Eliminating as much as possible the pipeline of aging inadequate school buildings so that we have fewer and fewer instances in which students spend their entire K-12 experience of our school system in spent and substandard buildings. Also, continually engaging in the community, the staff, parents, and students when we're gathering our Key Facility Indicator data so that the end product of that process transparently reflects the true experience of those that live in that school building every day, including common sense improvements in their surrounding infrastructure to ensure safe routes to school and enhancing our pedestrian safety countywide, which, as we hear too often, getting to school and from school has become a hazardous activity for some of our students. We're also very interested in seeing environmental sustainability embraced throughout the work we do in our system. We want to work with you to make sure that all of our buildings and facilities have the smallest environmental footprint possible and that sustainable techniques, including things like water bottle filling stations, are the norm. We also hear from many schools across the county a request for an equitable process of installing water bottle filling stations in schools. Often, we see PTAs and other school and community groups that foot the bill either for the purchase or the installation, and having safe drinking water in a school shouldn't depend on the resources of the school community. We also hear from many a request that non-capital strategies be used to address capacity issues to ensure the most efficient use of our capital dollars, and that while building condition and overutilization are the main factors in prioritizing construction process projects, socioeconomic makeup of a school should also be taken into account. Finally, I want to thank you deeply for taking the proactive and student-focused step of having an outside expert conduct a countywide review of our boundaries, cluster assignments, and program placements. Having a sound current objective information to guide our school system in assessing how we equitably use our resources is an incredibly important step. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Emily Madden from Springbrook Cluster.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Evans, and esteemed members of the board. I'm Emily Madden. I'm currently the assistant principal at Rascal Nix Elementary School and was previously the assistant principal at Crest Haven Elementary School, and I'm representing our cluster this evening. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to address our cluster's issues this evening. We're very grateful for your recent support to address community needs, including the plumbing and roofing situations at Springbrook High School and the secure access needs at White Oak Middle School. However, we remain concerned tonight about plans for our cluster's southernmost schools. After reviewing After reviewing last week's capital improvement plan recommendations with MCCPS representatives, we're disappointed that the proposals to continue to put the additions on Crest Haven and Roscoe-Nix Elementary School are still on the table as possible solutions to the overcrowding concerns at Joanne Lillik. It is our understanding as a community that, through petitions last year, our school communities made it clear that this is not a solution that puts the needs of our students first, and it will not solve the problem long-term. Last year, it was suggested that we build an entirely new school for the Lillik community as a solution, but now even that may not be enough. With the looming impact of the White Oak Science Gateway, which is to unfold fully over the next 20 to 30 years, we expect that the influx of new residents occupying the more than 8,000 planned single-family units will further compound the issue for all three schools. Crest Haven and Nix are already near or over capacity. According to the Capital Improvement Program report data, elementary school utilization is at 110% in the Northeast Consortium. It'll remain near capacity for after six years. If an elementary school is to be built to accommodate the children at the White Oak Science Gateway, the new facility will not necessarily solve overcrowding issues for our existing schools. It'll simply accommodate the students from the new housing units, and the overcrowding for our current schools will continue. We simply need an entirely new facility to address the student population needs at Crest Haven, Roscoe-Nix, and Joanne Lillik Elementary Schools. The funding to address these issues is already proposed. We're simply interested in a more effective way to use the funds that has been slated to create these additions to Roscoe-Nix and Crest Haven. In the short term, we propose a boundary study for students attending Joanne Lillik. In our June report, we observed that Lillik may benefit from consideration in the Forest Knolls, Montgomery Knolls, and Pinecrest Study. Data to support this is supplied in our written testimony on page two, and it appears in bold. In the long term, the proposed costs of additions equals the cost involved in building a completely new school. They're estimated to be the same. Based on the Office of Legislative's Oversight 2017 Report of New School Construction, that cost could be $23 to $23 million. If we forge ahead with additions instead of pouring our efforts into effective long-term solutions, not only are we delaying the inevitable, but we're also not fixing anything for our students and families. Reshuffling Lillik's population only means that now all three schools will be overcrowded to the tune of 63 students. The math just doesn't add up. It's not even close. Additions to Crest Haven and Nix are temporary, temporary and partial relief to Lillik at best and could be a short-sighted waste of spending time at worst. Significant attention is overdue to the Lillik community. It's the oldest elementary school in the Springbrook Cluster dating back to 1952. Jackson Road is the second, having been built in 1959 and revitalized in 1995. Do you know when Lillik was last revitalized? In 1974. That's 45 years. It ties Burtonsville for the second oldest school of all elementary, middle, and high schools in the entire Northeast Consortium. But Burtonsville was revitalized in 1993. The oldest school, Fairland, was revitalized in 1992. Only four schools in NEC have over 600 students, Joanne Lillik being one of them. Three of them have all received substantial attention, much more recently, Fairland in 92, Galloway into '09, and Jackson Road in '95. 96% of Lillik's student population is either Hispanic, Black, African-American. Only 2% identify as Asian and zero identify as white. 90% are receiving free and reduced meals. It feels as though they have been forgotten. Its general condition and demographics belie our district's efforts to close the opportunity gap. We believe a major solution to its myriad issues over the years, not the least of which is overcrowding, would be addressed by considering a new facility.
Thank you. We have your written testimony.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. At this, at this time, we will hear from Maggie Connolly, the Blake Cluster.
Good evening, President Evans and the Board of Education. I am pleased to stand before you on behalf of school communities that are brimming with innovation, programming, and community despite the physical restrictions and limitations they feel with their buildings and systems within those buildings. We, as a cluster, are grateful that the current CIP proposal recognizes some of those needs and has a specific plan for addressing the needs of Burt Mills Elementary School and Stonegate Elementary School with new schools in coming years. It is energizing and gratifying that these schools, whose populations and needs have been significant for many years, will both, by the middle of the 23-24 school year, be moved into new buildings to meet their needs. So, thank you for that recommendation, and we will, as a cluster, do whatever we can to support its funding being improved at the next levels. Over the last several years, we have witnessed the addition of the programs at some of our schools that make them even more attractive to attend. Page Elementary School is now home of a Spanish immersion program, and Stonegate Elementary School is home to a local CES program for our fourth and fifth grade students. In addition, Blake High School, who you heard from earlier, is the signature school for the fine arts and humanities in the Northeast Consortium, and Stonegate Elementary houses a significant LFI program for the Northeast Consortium and Sherwood Cluster. All of these programs are gifts to our communities, allowing our students to push themselves in new ways, find their gifts, and ultimately thrive. But they all also have an impact on our building needs and should be taken into account in the planning, not just the operating budget, but in the CIP. Three of our cluster elementary schools are currently over capacity with 26 relocatable classrooms between them, and it is clear from the recommendation for two of these to receive major capital projects and the third to have a feasibility study for a classroom addition, that there is agreement from MCCPS that this overcrowding is unacceptable and must be addressed. We are grateful for that identification and also recognize that our teachers and students will need to continue to function in substandard conditions until they are ready. With that in mind, we would ask that you consider a new way of proceeding for our elementary schools who are in this gap between identifying the problem and having the solution completed. Can we create a system that will make it easier for our administration and teachers to address the short-term problems that will inevitably come up in this interim period? We want to work together to ensure that these are not lost years where smart investments are made since the building is slated to be torn down or new structures will be built. We encourage the county to be creative with what this might look like as to use resources from other buildings who are ahead of our schedule to meet the needs of our schools and others in our position without spending money on buildings that will not be around for, in five years. We urge you to consider a streamlined approach to deal with these schools so that administrators and county staff can work together on a regular basis to address the immediate problems while looking forward to our exciting, long-term solution. We are excited for what the future holds for these schools, but for some perspective, only the current kindergarteners at Stonegate and first graders at Burt Mills will experience a full school year at their new schools. There is certainly much learning, growth, and development that will happen between now and then. We know that you, as well as us, want that to continue with as much little disruption as possible. The Signature Arts Program at Blake is a gift not just to our school, community, and consortium, but to our county and to our state. The level of music and arts programming that comes from our students there is truly a wonder to behold, and when you walk the halls at the NEC Open House for eighth graders choosing a school, there is no doubt of the, both the skill level and the pride that we take in the Signature Program, and we believe that the county does as well. While not reflected in this year's CIP, we would urge the Board and MCCPS to consider how we can continue to support the Signature Program with updated performance space, art equipment, and an HVAC system conducive to our needs. We are grateful that the conversation about Woodward as a potential arts magnet school means that the county understands the value and importance of arts education, and we hope that our existing thriving program would benefit from this understanding, and in the coming years, our facilities and systems will come close to matching the skills, talents, and hard work of those taking advantage of the program. You heard from several of our students speak earlier, and you can only wish that you had heard them sing, play, or perform. The Northeast Consortium and Sherwood Clusters support the community schools model and encourage the Board of Education and MCCPS to review this concept and reject island busing from one neighborhood to the next with respect to staying ahead of planned and projected development in our communities that can bring people and resources closer together.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We will now hear from Dr. Adongo from Paint Branch Cluster.
Good evening. The Board, on behalf of the cluster of Paint Branch, I want to relay my gratitude in terms of what you did last year, and when people do a good job, we have to appreciate them a little bit, so I want to appreciate what you did. I did the testimony. We did the key highlight of some of the issues. You tried to do some of them, and we thank you. And on behalf of the Principal of Benjamin Benica, and Green Castle, they really appreciate what you did. Now, my testimony, I mean, five minutes are very short time, so I'll focus on important issues. My testimony is clustered in two categories. One, cross-cutting issues about the cluster, because I'm representing the cluster, and the key highlights of the institutions as independent institutions. Across what I've given, there are some things that are bordering on safety, and I've put the picture there that needs to be addressed as of yesterday. Like Batonville High, I mean, elementary school issue of bus loop and the parent loop is very, very serious, and we don't want to wait until there's altercation because it has reached that level with the parents. So, if you, as a Board, can address those basics, they would really appreciate. In terms of the overcrowding and the repairs, the population is growing. At 900, they don't, the EVAC system in one of the schools has been an issue for almost five years. Children are subjected to hot conditions during summer, and I think this borders on safety issues and health issues. The space is a constraint, and part of the concern is that when there's sickness in the school, they can't even quarantine. So, I think as a Board, if we can begin to prioritize some of these issues and try to address them as a matter of urgency, they would really appreciate. Now, in terms of the cross-cutting issues, among our clusters, this issue of transportation and safety, the buses are overcrowded, some move within the, outside the jurisdiction of the communities, and this is a great challenge for both parents and for the, and for the teachers. And it is an issue that I was requested as one of the representative of our cluster to emphasize that it is becoming a safety issue in terms of accountability because children cannot be accounted for within the community if they go within the, outside the jurisdiction of where they, because of the buses. So, if that could be addressed, that would be appreciated. Boundary review as a cross-cutting issue, the cluster is requesting a more consultative approach where at least there's involvement of the community and there's that participation among the community members, so that at least we can make an informed decision. And this relates even the curriculum that was developed, which has become a big challenge for some of us who have been going for the meetings where there was no, lack of preparation and lack of time in terms of rolling and implementation. So, if the Board could prioritize on those elements, it would be appreciated by the consortium. In terms of major capital issue which have been highlighted by my other colleague, I don't want to repeat them, but you can, when you take your time, you'll embrace yourself with the report, the key highlights, that you can go into specific schools, and at the end of the day, we'd want to appreciate our continuity. So, next year, I hope we're going to appreciate you more because I'm beginning to appreciate you more as opposed to last year, because at least you addressed some of the issues, and we want to appreciate that. We don't want to look at you just as an agent of solution, solving our problem, but also appreciating the good work you're doing. And you have a guarantee of my vote for the good work. And lastly, on behalf of the consortium, we want to request that if you could deal with issue of security, and of course, some of the old schools, if you could deal with mold, because mold is a big, it's a cross-cutting issue among the old schools, and it's a challenge that is bordering on health issues. So, without levering on many things, there are details that you could go and deal with. Lastly, the portables reductions. Portables have become, if you, if the team can come up with a proactive strategy so that at least they could deal with all those, you know, the ratio between teachers and also the students and also the portables, I think that is an area that could be discussed. Otherwise, thank you so much. I don't want to bash anybody today. I'm so excited, and congratulations for the work you're doing, and above all, we'll be out there to support you in a partnership and collaborative manner. Otherwise, thank you so much, and hopefully you capture all the details in the paper. I don't want to go line by line.
Right.
Because you have it. Thank you so much. I think my minute is over.
Thank you. We will now hear from Tammy Fox, Sherwood Cluster.
Good evening. We in the Sherwood Cluster would first like to thank you for taking the time to review the needs of our cluster and for all the schools in the county. We would also like to thank all the leaders in our county who worked tirelessly to make sure our children have the best education possible, a safe and outstanding work environment for our teachers and staff, and the most productive and secure learning environment for our students. The majority of our schools in the Sherwood Cluster are admittedly in pretty good shape. However, we have three schools with issues that we'd like to highlight tonight. Belmont Elementary, Sherwood High School, and Onley Elementary School. We still have, Belmont Elementary is one of our schools in our cluster that still does not have a secure vestibule, which is of great concern to all of the parents and everyone in our community. Belmont was built in 1974. It was originally on the REVX program. Then it was taken, when that program was taken down, it was moved to the to-be-determined, and at this point, we're not really sure where a lot of the updates that that building so desperately needs place. Belmont is not mentioned in the SIP at all this year, and we understand that this is because the secure vestibule issue has been moved to a security budget and that it is still on track to be completed this summer. We certainly hope that that is, that that is the case. Mr. Dr. Zuckerman, you're shaking your head? Okay. We would also like Belmont Elementary School to be considered for a major capital improvement. There are quite a few issues that the school faces on a daily basis, and before I get too far, I want to mention that they did have a minor gas leak last night, and MCCPS was amazing. They came out, they fixed it, we're all good. But that's just one of the byproducts in the boiler room of a, of a very old building. There, like I said, there's no secure vestibule, there were recently needed radon and lead remediation that needed to be done, there is an inadequate, actually, no health room, there's lack of teacher, storage for teacher materials, you, there's faux walls, there's no instrumental music room, there's an insufficient kitchen, there's no real actual food storage area with a working freezer, and there's insufficient classrooms, there's no hallway access to the playground. You have to walk around the building along the parking lot to get to the playground, and these are elementary school students. So, these are just some of the highlights of a very aging building. Once, we also, moving on to Sherwood High School. Sherwood High School was last updated in 1991, and it's been added on to several, several times. It almost looks like an octopus. As such, the HVAC, HVAC system cannot keep up. The building is, and as a result, there have been some mold issues in classrooms. In one classroom, it's freezing, in one classroom, the students refer to it as the Sahara Desert. The change in climate makes the learning environment, in particular in a high school, extremely difficult for students to focus. You know, when it's too hot to, or too cold to focus, it makes it impossible to stay awake, it makes it impossible for teachers to continue to hold their students' attention and get through their planned lesson for the day. It's more than a maintenance issue at this point, it's a learning issue. Lastly, I'd like to address the boundary analysis issue briefly. Sherwood is a smaller cluster, and we're fortunate in many ways. However, Onley Elementary is overcapacity while two other elementary schools very close by are undercapacity, Belmont, which I previously mentioned, and Greenwood. We understand that the six-year projections for population growth have changed based on the SIP. However, every available space in Onley Elementary is being used for instruction, to the point where there are students sitting on the floor with clipboards because there physically are not enough seats in the classroom or space to put chairs in the classroom. And the Sherwood, if you've ever, Onley Elementary, relocatable classrooms are not really an option. It sits on the corner of Route 108 and Georgia Avenue, and the principal there, as well as the community, agree, we don't want to put portable classrooms on Georgia Avenue. It's not safe for the students. The Sherwood Cluster would support a small study to determine to determine if the elementary school boundaries for Onley, Greenwood, and Belmont could be realigned to alleviate some of the overcrowding at Onley Elementary School. Once again, thank you for your time this evening and for considering our, our issues in the Sherwood Cluster. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Christopher Bowerman from the Watkins Mill Cluster.
Good evening, President Evans, Dr. Smith, members of the Montgomery County Board of Education. My name is Chris Bowerman, and I am the MCC PTA Cluster Coordinator for the Watkins Mill Cluster. And I am again grateful to represent and be the voice of our schools before you tonight. The Watkins Mill Cluster is pleased to see the continuing efforts set forth by the Superintendent and the School Board in the 2021 CIP with regards to the growth and capacity issues for our county schools as a whole and for our cluster specifically. We are especially pleased to see South Lake Elementary and Nealsville Middle Schools listed in the CIP as priorities for renovation and the new, or new buildings. The current buildings, along with the students and the faculty who attend them, are in desperate need of relief, and we ask you to continue to keep these projects funded and on schedule. On a daily basis, the populations of these schools must navigate dangerously crowded hallways and stairwells, deal with insufficient bathrooms for the number of students and faculty, eat in overcrowded cafeterias that extend lunch periods, enter classrooms with little or no sunlight, freeze or sweat in uncomfortable temperatures in the classrooms, and contend with no elevators. And at Nealsville, this means using an access ramp that I challenge anyone at this table to get in a wheelchair and push themselves up that ramp. We look forward to the reconstruction of these facilities and seeing this implemented. The Watkins Mill Cluster truly appreciates your consideration and support of Nealsville and South Lake, but unfortunately, they are not our only schools in need of attention. The cluster as a whole needs the focus of MCPS. As evidence, I compared three important columns of the Elementary Cluster Totals Row of the demographic characteristics chart listed in each of the cluster sections of the CIP. The Watkins Mill Cluster has the highest farms, ESOL, and mobility rates in the entire county. All three scores were well above the county average score by double digits. Every school, every school in our cluster has a farms rate of over 50%. Our mobility rate of 22.7 is the highest because of a large portion of shared housing families in our area. These numbers are a reflection of our schools and show that the cluster is clearly an exception and in need of assistance. Of the seven schools in our cluster, only two have secured entrances. This needs to be corrected. We view this, this request as a priority. Whetstone Elementary is grateful for the new portable classroom that they received this year, but students are now moving between the main building and the portable through doors that are not key-card controlled. As a result, the doors either lock people out sometimes or are propped open and left insecure. Whetstone asks that key, that key-card controlled locks be installed to help resolve this issue and secure the building. At Montgomery Village Middle School, the telephone system, a critical, a critical communications element in an emergency, is broken and in need of replacement. Watkins Mill Elementary School requires better outside lighting and security cameras. Security alone is not the sole issue or problem with our schools. They are aged, worn, and neglected. Overhead lights are not covered, because replacements can no longer be found. Classrooms with single outlets cannot handle the number of devices plugged into the single power, into multiple power strips. Peeling paint, old faucets, broken doorknobs, splintered storage cabinets, crumbling ceiling tiles, foul-tasting water fountains, and HVAC problems are all common issues in every school. And they need correcting. Even the press box at Watkins Mill High School is now 30 years old and in need of replacement. During last year's hearings, I pointed out that the past 10 years have seen the areas surrounding Montgomery Village heavily developed, and their clusters the primary focus of the region. Now, the Watkins Mill Cluster needs and asks for that focus. A school is not just a building, but a place fundamentally founded on the idea of community. Our schools are ailing, and our surrounding community is in need of assistance. It is my wish and hope that you and MCPS will pay attention to our plea and help us create and feed a positive cycle. By improving our schools, you will help heal the community, which will in turn be beneficial to those schools. We thank the Board of Education for listening to our concerns and your continued support and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Ram Tengarala from the Quince Orchard Cluster. I'm going to go back to Logan Lewis. Has Logan Lewis returned? All right. So I will open it up to Board questions then. We've come to the end of the section, hearing from Cluster Coordinators. I did want to thank everyone for coming out. We have a packed house across the hall. Room 114 is full as well. Just wanted to thank you all for your commitment to our schools, paying attention, following our work. I also want to acknowledge any of our MCPS employees. If there are any MCPS employees in the room at this time, would you please stand, wave your hand? We would acknowledge you. Had a long day at work, and you've come out to hear the community. We appreciate you. At this time, we will open it up for questions. We will begin with Mrs. O'Neil. Okay. Dr. Daca, did you have any questions? Did you have any questions that you wanted to ask? Yes.
Yeah, I thank you for the testimony, everyone. There are some, maybe we can have a short explanation about the Crestview addition and about Onley and the two schools that are close by. I know there's some reasoning behind that, because you talked with us about it before, but I'm not able to explain that. So I'm asking staff to do that. And before you do that, I just want to say how much spirit there is in the Watkins Mill Cluster. How wonderful the kids are and the staff, and how enthusiastic they are about it. They have to overcome a lot, but I think that they're sticking together. And I'm really proud of you guys. I live up the street, you know that.
Mrs. Mandrowski. Okay. Ms. Dixon, do you have any comments, question?
Yeah, I just second Dr. Daca's request in terms of looking at the elementary schools in the Sherwood Cluster.
Okay.
To see whether we can even that out.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bestry.
I wanted to ask staff if they could look into the Whetstone key-card lock issue for security purposes?
Yeah, we're going to look into that.
Mr. Tenby. Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. Hold on one second. I'm looking for my question. Oh, again, it goes to vestibules in the Watkins Mill Cluster. Can you give me an idea about when we should expect that all the schools will have gone through some process?
So we're at the point with our vestibules where the, these are now substantive, significant projects that are being sequenced over the next three years. We have 28 schools left in the MCPS inventory that still do not have vestibules. We have a security project description form in our CIP to complete these projects. It's a matter of staging them, the design, and the execution of it. And that's going to take place over the next few years for any schools that don't have vestibules.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So at this time, we will continue on with our speakers. We are looking forward to hearing from Kim Kaminsky from the Damascus Cluster. You can begin.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith and Board of Education members. My name is Kim Kaminsky, and I am here tonight with Amy Avacachi. We are your Damascus Cluster coordinators. Even though our community is not a bustling suburb, we will experience significant population growth in the coming years. While most of our schools are not overcrowded, a majority of our schools are crumbling and in total disrepair. Our students deserve 21st century learning environment just as much as students in other clusters. We would like to thank the Board of Education for the improvements that were made to our schools, including the security vestibule at Damascus High School and the parking lots at John T. Baker Middle School and Damascus Elementary School over the summer. Damascus High School was built in 1950 and is one of the oldest high schools in Montgomery County. We hosted the Board of Education meeting in May in which you learned of the disgusting conditions that the school was in. Some of those needs were addressed over the summer. You also heard from Damascus High School and elementary school alumni from over 30 years ago express their frustration, stating that the schools have been virtually untouched from the time they went to school, when their children went to school, and now when their grandchildren are going to school. We are happy to see that a major capital project for Damascus High School is finally being prioritized and included in the CIP. We urge you to support the Damascus High School project and provide our students with the 21st century learning environment they deserve. Damascus Elementary School was built in 1934 with no significant improvement since 1980, in which the gym addition was built. A revitalization expansion project was developed for the school. However, this project has not been prioritized or approved despite it being the second oldest elementary school in the county. Two new portables were added at Damascus Elementary. These portables are not even ADA compliant. The school is still overcrowded, and there is not enough instructional space. Small instructional groups are often being taught in closets and in file rooms. This is unacceptable. Our students deserve better than this. The gym still has what they call a rubber floor. It also has two vents in the walls that are not functioning properly. They are not sealed from the outside elements, so when it rains or snows, it actually comes into the building. The interior of the building has not been painted in 29 years. The electrical system isn't adequate for today's technology. Rooms have to take turns charging their equipment at certain times of the day. The plumbing in the building is old. Our dedicated building services workers come in every morning to run the water and flush the toilets to make sure the system is working for the students and staff. There are constantly leaks in the building, and the roof is beyond its lifespan. We are thankful that the CIP includes a replacement of the roof, but it is disheartening that nothing else will be done for our students. Damascus Elementary has no security vestibule, which is a major safety to concern. We are requesting funding for Damascus Elementary. John T. Baker Middle School was built in 1971. Two portable classrooms were added to Baker this year. There were no security measures added when they were installed except for some cameras, not even fencing to separate from the parking lot. We understand MCPS approved FY 2020 appropriation for facility planning funds to conduct a feasibility study for a possible addition to the school. We are hopeful that an addition is approved to modernize our urging, our aging middle school and address this increased capacity. Our security vestibule was never completed. If you were to visit the school, you will notice that when you enter the vestibule, it only goes as high as the door frames. We request funding to have this completed properly. Clear Spring Elementary School was built in 1988. It is one of the 33 schools in the county that still has yet to receive a security vestibule. Is it not in your best interest to keep the children of this community safe? You go to work every day knowing that you will be safe. Your offices have a security vestibule. Why not our schools? That should be your number-one priority. Rockwell, oh, Damascus is going to be the community that you will be tired of hearing from until we get what our students and staff need and deserve. We would like to invite Board members to tour our aging facilities to give you a visual of what our students and staff experience every day, so you have a better understanding of their needs. I truly hope I don't have to be standing here in 10 years fighting for the same capital improvements for the Damascus community. On behalf of the Damascus Cluster, I would like to thank you for allowing us to present our capital improvement needs. Please do not put us on backorder anymore.
Thank you. At this time, I'm just going to slip in a student that wasn't able to speak earlier. Can Naomi Tesfaw come up to speak? Come to the front? Yeah, come on around. Begin when you're ready.
Good evening, members of the Board. I am Naomi Tesfaw, the Class of 2022 president. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak on behalf of Springbrook. I want to speak about my experience during my first visit to Springbrook. As a freshman, I was considering schools that I wanted to attend. Springbrook seemed like a great option. However, because of the gloomy, unwelcoming appearance of the school, I thought it was not a school that was given the same chance as others in the area that have more updated facilities, namely, a much-needed artificial turf stadium, competition lights for our baseball and softball fields, the renovation of our locker rooms, and auditorium lighting. Please give our school the same opportunities to shine as others in our consortium. For our students, our, our school's appearance is an important factor towards our decision and school pride. When we invite our friends and family to the school, and as we walk in every morning, we want to be proud to call Springbrook our home school and know that people are responsible for, and know that the people that are responsible for updating our schools care about Springbrook and all of its students. Please consider the renovation request that parents and administration will be presenting to you this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll continue on at 4:10. Carolyn Garvey, from Gaithersburg Cluster.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Garvey. I'm with the Gaithersburg Cluster Coordinator. Our cluster consists of seven elementary schools, three of which are Title I schools, two middle schools, and one high school. I want to start by thanking MCPS for addressing some following issues. Some of these items I've included in my, excuse me, some of these items are not included in the CIP budget. However, they still have had an effect on the morals of the students and the staff at the schools, and we appreciate that they were addressed. I've included in my written testimony, and I'm going to highlight a few of them tonight. The first is, at Starbury Noel Elementary School, there was an erosion barrier that was constructed around the playground. This barrier is now keeping off dirt, runoff, and gravel off the blocktop area, and it's created a safer area for students to play at recess. I've included some before and after pictures, so you can see the impact of that. So thank you for that. At Rosemont Elementary School, an additional bathroom was added for the CAP classroom. This is very important, this classroom, this bathroom was very important, because now the CAP students will now have the privacy when they have, if there's accidents or if they're being potty-trained. And at Gaithersburg, Gaithersburg Elementary School, we also wanted to let you know that we appreciate the new concrete steps and hand railings that were put in the back of the schools. Prior to its placement, there was a muddy, rocky, roided slope that was very difficult for walkers to go to and from school up that slope. So thank you. Now, I want to focus on some remaining issues that need to be addressed. We recognize that MCPS has plans to address some of them, while others need more immediate attention. I have a full list of them in my written testimony to you, but I'm only going to highlight a few of them tonight. So the first is, we're looking forward to the eighth elementary school that is planned for our cluster. The overcapacity issue at four of the elementary schools still exists and still needs to be addressed. As we move forward with this school, I would like to echo the concerns mentioned by Mayor Ashman tonight and ask that MCPS take an approach that maximizes the number of walkers[1723.53] Ashman tonight and ask the MCPs take an approach that maximizes the number of walkers from all the neighbor, neighboring communities when the boundary studies for that school, when we have that. So the other thing that I want to keep on your radar is something also the Judge Ashman had mentioned tonight was that, keeping on your radar to revitalize Summit Hall Elementary School. The new eighth elementary school will likely not address all the overcrowding at our, in our cluster, so our cluster needs multiple solutions. Summit Hall is also the furthest from the selected site of the eighth school, and it also has been on the revitalization, revitalization list for years, but that action has been continuously postponed. Now I have some small items that need more immediate attention. One of these is a security camera at the side of Strawberry Hill Elementary School, which leads to ten portable classrooms for a hundred and twenty students. Without a security classroom at this door, there is no way to buzz in students on the side of the school. For the safety of these students and for the safety of the students inside the building, the school needs to see who's coming and going. So in a, a security camera would allow the main office to see who is at the door, buzz the students in as they, when they need access to the building. Summit Hall Elementary School also needs a security camera at the back of their school, mainly where their, the entrance to the health room is, the health, health part of the building. There are other cameras in different parts of the school, but not in the two back entrances of the school. So if someone with malice intentions were to, they say, jump the school fence and enter through the back doors, it would take longer for the office to alert the school of something happening than if they had a camera's view of the person entering the school. These are basically some low-hanging, these last two things, some low-hanging fruit that I think can easily be addressed to improve the safety of the two schools. Lastly, I just have, at Leighton's Elementary, Leightonsville Elementary School, they just received or got a new AC system. The AC, this AC system is somehow making some very loud noises that's, and banging noises that have been disrupting the teaching in the classroom and distracting the students. So thank you, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Deirdre Appel from the McGruder Cluster.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Appel, and I am proud to serve as one of the McGruder Cluster coordinators. The McGruder Cluster is so very appreciative to have, to have several of our facilities on the capital improvement list. We're excited to see what the future will bring for our students and for our facilities. I'm going to focus tonight, however, on what happens before that, during those years of planning and waiting before the capital projects, to focus on what our current McGruder Cluster students need right now so they can grow and learn and flourish. Last year, I stood before this body with a grave concern that the Flower Hill Elementary parking lot was a disaster waiting to happen. What I would give to tell you that I was wrong. The unimaginable did happen. A child was hit by a car in that parking lot. Last year was the fifth year in a row that we have asked for that parking lot to be redesigned. After the child was hit, that's when MCPs sent Transportation and Safety out to take a look at the site and provide recommendations for changes. The community at that point was hopeful. When they were told that the changes would be completed during the summer of 2019, the community was cautiously optimistic. And then, nothing. MCPs Transportation and Safety canceled all of the future meetings and has provided no additional information or timeline for that parking lot redesign. I'd ask you to hear the words of Alana, who's a fifth grader at Flower Hill and who's also a patrol. Here's what she says. "A few weeks ago, something really scary happened. A few of my friends, who are also patrols, stand at the entrance of the parking lot. Their post is to put cones up to stop cars from pulling into the lot and to move those cones for buses and teachers. One day, a substitute who didn't know the rules pulled right in and hit my friend. He wasn't hurt, but we were all really scared. I know there are a lot of things that need to be fixed, but this is really important. We need to keep our kids safe. I hope that you will help Flower Hill by fixing our parking lot. Out of the mouths of babes come wisdom. I implore you to make changes to the Flower Hill parking lot. This is the sixth year for this request. Please do not let another child get hit on our watch." In addition to the critical parking lot changes, Flower Hill would also request parking lot lights installed in the parking lot to have lighting so that our teachers and our parents and our students can get to cars safely at night. I would say additional lighting, but there isn't lighting already, so they have nothing. McGruder High School has been identified for a capital project plan in this year's capital plan, and we are so very thankful for you to recognize that our fifty-year-old facility needs improvements. However, McGruder will need substantial maintenance and improvements in the coming years before that capital project. Even if the SIP stays on schedule, two generations of students will have matriculated through McGruder before that plan completion date. Education is supposed to be the great equalizer. However, the disparity for our students at new schools and for our students at schools with aging infrastructure such as McGruders have created a stark contrast of the haves and the have-nots. Invest in our students who call McGruder home now. Work with us to identify opportunities and improvements that could be done now that would make a significant positive difference for our students at McGruder every single day. Mill Creek Town Elementary was selected to house the new Center for Enriched Studies Magnet Program, and this continues to be welcome news for our mid-county students and parents. However, that comes at a detriment to other students. Mill Creek was already overcrowded, and with the added Magnet students, more than one-third of the students are in portables. It is projected to be so overcrowded in coming years, MCPs is planning to build an addition to that school. The sad irony is that a neighborhood away, Candlewood Elementary has more than two hundred open seats. This is the opposite of build it and they will come. This is, we have seen the enemy, and it is us. And lastly, we have many portable classrooms. I stopped counting at fifty. I would ask you to consider adding cameras at the perimeters of all of the portables, giving us intercoms so that we can contact the front desk and that we can have buzzers to let people in.
Thank you. We have your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. At this time, we will hear from Rochelle Fink from the Whitman Cluster. You can begin.
Good evening, President Evans, Board members, and Superintendent Smith. I am Rochelle Fink, representing the parents, teachers, staff, and students of the Whitman Cluster of schools. I am joined by my fellow Cluster coordinators, Sherry Altman and Lisa London, oh, I found her, as well as many parents and staff of our seven schools. Thank you to everybody for coming. We greatly appreciate that parents and students are held as important partners in the process, and we thank you very much for the opportunity to testify on the capital budget and the CIP this evening. First and foremost, I'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Education, Superintendent Smith, and the Division of Capital Planning Staff for the FY 20 funding to begin construction at Whitman High School. We really, really do appreciate it. We ask that the Board of Education supports the superintendent's recommendation to include the funding required to complete the project in their FY 21 capital budget request to Montgomery County. In preparation for the addition, portables now cover most of the Whitman parking lot. Currently, Whitman is more than one hundred and eighty students over capacity, and we need the addition to be completed by the fall of 2021, when the largest class in Pyle's history will matriculate at Whitman. We project the class to be six hundred and forty-three ninth graders. Five hundred and sixty-eight students joining Whitman from Pyle, and usually there's about seventy-five students that join from outside the cluster, private schools are outside the cluster to come to Whitman, and so that gives us our six hundred and forty-three number. Without the addition, Whitman will be three hundred and seventy students over capacity by 2024. Whitman's facility needs are urgent and will grow more severe in the coming years as a new residential product, project is slated to start in Westbard. Current enrollment projections for the Wood Acres Elementary School, Pyle Middle School, and Whitman do not yet include the impact of over one thousand new dwelling units in the Westbard area. Whitman sorely needs the extra space. We would also very much like to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Smith, and the Division of Capital Planning Staff for the Pyle addition. I'd also like to thank Dr. Zuckerman for recently coming to the school to see the addition. Pyle is the largest middle school in the county on the smallest plot of land. It educates nearly one thousand five hundred and fifty students. We've been working with the Montgomery County Schools for over one decade on matters related to space and safety at Pyle. We are more than appreciative that our teachers, staff, and students will now have sufficient classroom space and core space to move safely through the building and to service the educational needs of our students. Realizing all that you've done for our cluster, the Whitman Cluster only has a few very small requests this year. We would like for Burning Tree Elementary School to be evaluated to make sure the building complies with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Burning Tree has an elevator in the back of the school, and you have to go through classrooms in order to access the elevator. So we just want to make sure that this is not running afoul of any rules and regulations that are set forth by the Americans with Disabilities Act. As you can imagine, if there's a child in a wheelchair, that child must then traverse to get to the elevator. Secondly, we also like for MCPs to evaluate whether Burning Tree students have safe access to school during morning drop-off and afternoon drop-off hours. Burning Tree has a bus loop, but it doesn't have a car rider loop, so children are dropped off on the side of the street, and then they have to cross the street in order to get to Burning Tree Elementary School. There is an auxiliary kindergarten play yard in the front of the school, and Burning Tree is willing to give up that play yard in order to put in a car rider loop so that kids can enter more safely. Finally, or thirdly, we'd like to request that MCPs expedite security vestibular, vestibule installation in all MCPs schools. We happen to have one school, Bannock Burn, that doesn't have a security vestibule, so we would like for you to address that, and we've heard from many of the other schools as they need security vestibules too. Finally, we thank you very much for proposing and adopting a resolution to study the impact of class size.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have your own testimony. At this time, we will hear from Kathy Stoker from the Chevy Chase Cluster.
Good evening, President Evans, Board of Education members, and Superintendent Smith. Thank you all for your past and proposed investment in our dynamic and fast-growing cluster. As those of us with teenagers know, rapid growth brings with it some growing pains, and as we are all on this journey of growth, we value our collaboration with newly-minted Director Seth Adams and the entire Department of Facilities Management, Director Adrian Kermehas and Debbie Seifer in the Division of Capital Planning. All this growth, of course, precipitated a capacity study. We want to commend the work done by the DLR Architectural Group. Their analysis yielded some promising recommendations put forth by Superintendent Smith and the CIP. The proposed boundary study between Westbrook and Somerset is not unexpected, given the overcrowding at Somerset. The Westbrook community supports a boundary study and is excited to welcome their neighbors from Somerset. Westbrook and Somerset leadership share the same concern that any construction and boundary changes be completed in a timeframe that allows the school ample time to plan for staffing and for the communities and families to form new relationships. Somerset supports a thoughtful, transparent study which addresses how adjusting boundaries between Somerset and Westbrook might further MCPs goals and the educational experience of students at both schools, as well as how any changes in the short term fit with longer-term goals. Given the proposed boundary study and the expectation of growth at Westbrook, the proposal to finish out the three-shell classrooms at Westbrook is welcomed by the community. Bethesda Elementary continues to be dramatically impacted by growth in downtown Bethesda and urges the approval and full funding of this proposed CIP so that a much-needed addition at BE can be completed by the first day of school 2023. The BE school faculty has had to get really creative to make things work there, but they are running out of options. Lunch is held in classrooms for sections due to lack of space to accommodate everyone in the school cafeteria. During recess, only one grade at a time can be in the playground area due to space constraints. Educational programming at this school has to be doubled up, so we have ESOL, special ed, and instrumental instruction all forced to use the same spaces. It's very difficult to find space needed for specials and, very importantly, for service providers. So when a school psychologist visits, for example, he or she has to find a place to be, there's no place to put that person. While additional relocatable classrooms can help ease some of this crowding a bit in the short term, the proposed classroom addition is urgently needed. Even with the addition of classrooms at BE in 2023, we anticipate that the increased need for elementary school capacity will remain in the cluster. We understand the reasoning employed in proposing planning for a joint elementary school for the BC and WJ clusters. As we struggle with our own capacity issues in the BCC cluster, we know that our friends in the WJ cluster are experiencing their own serious growing pains as well. We have some time in the upcoming CIP to ensure that capacity needs are addressed in both clusters, and we urge MCPs and the Board to examine enrollment projections with a critical eye. We believe that there is a good possibility that future growth in the WJ cluster alone will support a new elementary school there in addition to potentially a new elementary school in our own cluster. All of these decisions that we are making here about where kids will have space to learn and where we will spend the millions of dollars to build that space rely on the accuracy of our projections. When MGT was hired to develop a new forecasting model to project growth and enrollment, we were promised that we would get to look under the hood and see what assumptions MGT was employing when building the forecasting model. We have not yet been given that opportunity to look into the black box where the number crunching is happening. Like any great MCPs, math teacher would demand, we want them to show us their work. The current projections raise some serious concerns, especially since some schools are projected to have fewer kids than they actually have in seats now. We urge the Board to review with care and a critical eye, not only the numbers themselves, but the underlying assumptions employed by the model. How is MGT weighing its statistical analysis, and how is future growth really factored in? We urge the Board and MCPs to explain to the community how these projections are being calculated. As a mom of those teenage boys, I always keep a longer pair of pants around because there's always a morning when one son comes down the stairs for breakfast with pants that are way too short. I don't buy a whole new wardrobe, but I keep an extra pair of pants. I'd urge the Board to consider a similar approach. We're not advocating for a whole new wardrobe, just a way to let the hem down when we know that growth is coming. Please consider incorporating a little slack. Thank you for your consideration in the proposed improvements in our cluster, and thank you for your service to our families.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Jane Lierman from the Poolsville Cluster. You can begin.
Good evening, President Evans, Dr. Smith, members of the Board of Education and MCPs leadership. My name is Jane Lierman, and I proudly represent the small but mighty Poolsville Cluster. We are Monocacy Elementary, John Poole Middle, Poolsville Elementary, and Poolsville High Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to advocate for our students and for Poolsville High Schools' major capital improvements that are recommended in the superintendent's 2021-26 CIP. Our multi-cluster community supports the superintendent's recommended CIP, but we have a few safety improvements we would like considered. These are small projects that can be added to the CIP or funded with money earmarked for school safety upgrades. A detailed list of the program and non-program projects are shown in pages three, two, five of my written testimony. I'd like to start by sharing some outstanding issues in our elementary and middle schools that were not programmed in the CIP. We request a repair or replacement of the HVAC system at Monocacy Elementary School. The school has installed a dehumidifier in each room, but on very humid days, the air is still very damp. Sometimes a mildew smell permeates the school, and negative health outcomes could result. In addition, Monocacy requests a security camera and swipe card access device in the back of the school in a large parking lot and several, separate entrances for cars and buses to increase student safety. Poolsville Elementary has a serious safety issue with its PA system. Students cannot hear announcements when they're in the restrooms. As a result, they could be in jeopardy if there were a weather emergency, fire, or intruder. Please repair or replace the PA system so that all announcements can be heard in the restrooms. Poolsville Elementary also requests locks between eight adjoining classrooms to maximize the security during a lockdown. Our community greatly appreciates the commitment of a new roof at John Poole Middle as the current roof leaks into the locker rooms, yet the school has other needs. The back door, which is near the outside classroom, also does not have a swipe card access device. This needs to be installed so students do not have to take a time-consuming walk to the entrance. The school also requests the replacement of sidewalks around the building and a right-size HVAC unit for the main office suite. Separately, I'd like to confirm that the requested PA system, swipe card devices, door locks, and cameras can be installed, repaired, or replaced using money that is designated for safety upgrades, a difference of funding source from the CIP. It was a happy day when it was announced that Poolsville High School would receive long-awaited funds for major capital improvements. I want to acknowledge the amazing advocacy of our students- I want to acknowledge the amazing advocacy of our students, parents, PTA leaders, staff, municipal officials, the Fair Access, and their Fair Access Committee for their years-long effort in getting the new school built. We are grateful that we can officially partner with MCPS to make a new Poolsville High School a reality. To achieve that end, we respectfully request that the Board of Education approve the entire $71 million allocation plus the rest of the CIP so that we can replace our 66-year-old main building with a minor facility. Even more urgent is the approval of planning funds in the FY 2021 CIP. Please approve this money this year so that we can develop plans and update our buildings as soon as possible. And while we appreciate the capital project, we are hopeful that a complete tear-down or rebuild of the school still may happen. I'm thinking about those shows where people go in and they fix up a really old house and then the whole thing has to be torn down. I assume that there are many surprises in the high school that may justify a complete rebuild. I understand the financial challenges, but I would not be doing my job as Poolsville Cluster Coordinator if I did not encourage you to keep an open mind about a brand-new school. The Poolsville community is looking forward to doing the really hard work securing the funds that our schools so desperately need. This CIP is extremely ambitious and very expensive. We are committed to lending our collective voice to your advocacy with the Montgomery County Council and the Maryland State Legislature. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the small but mighty Poolsville Cluster and to my cluster colleagues. Well done, good luck, this is hard work. God bless you all.
Thank you. At this time, we will open it up for our board members' questions. We will start with Dr. Daka.
Just one thing. There are many things, but Flower Hill's parking lot, we could talk about that.
We will revisit that. We've had a team out there, as the speaker said, a couple of times and so I need to follow up with our pedestrian safety team to see what our next steps will be. We have a couple of ideas.
Mrs. Modrowski.
Yep, thank you. So, I too have the Flower Hill on my list. I have a couple of things. It'd be, you know, I was curious what happened there and where we are in terms of making sure that no one else gets hurt. The security vestibules, I know you spoke to it earlier, but could you just clarify? All security vestibules will be finished by the end of the summer, is that correct or not?
No, not the end of this summer, over the next three years. There's a spending affordability as well as just the capacity of contractors and our team to do it, so we have to sequence it because these are not small projects at this point. You heard the example of Damascus High School, for example, and that'll be addressed as we do a major capital project there, but the actual main office is in the center of the building. So, there's some pretty significant work that needs to take place in some of our schools where we have to move offices so that they're not easy fixes and that's why they have to be sequenced over the next couple of years and that's what our CIP is positioned to do.
Okay. Another thing that we have talked about many, many, many times, the security cameras, you know, the ones that were requested at Strawberry Knoll and Summit Hall, most specifically because they were directly addressed. But at all of our schools, particularly at the back, you know, we've continually had conversations about making sure that where our portables are, there's cameras. It should be something that the front office can see if someone's trying to come in or be buzzed in and I don't know where we are.
So, this is a constant state of ongoing evaluation because the landscape of schools shifts as we add portables and remove portables. Under the Maryland Safe to Learn Act of 2018, we did, all school districts did a full facility evaluations. They had to be done by last June. We did ours by last June. We're in the process now of implementing, to the best of our ability, the recommendations coming from that. A lot of that work will entail swipe access readers on side doors, additional security cameras in areas where there might be some vulnerable spots or areas that we need greater visibility and we're in the process of doing that right now for all schools. And of course, just like anything, it's dependent on funding and so we're trying to be very strategic about where we position those. I've captured the ones that we've heard from tonight. We'll make sure that we have teams to look at those specifically.
Okay, I appreciate it. If somehow we could get some sort of information in terms of how we're going to make those decisions, I mean, there's only so much money, we all know, to go around, but I just think it would be helpful. I also had concerns about the projections data and was wondering if we've heard from multiple clusters over this year, but if we could maybe set up a way of explaining to people how it's done and, you know, and be able to look at that and...
Sure. Yep, and we are in the process. I think by next week, we'll have an update to the board just on the MGT projections. That was a request from the board at the October 28 session. And just a reminder that those projections used to build last year's CIP, we have a new demographer, Robin O'Hara, who presented to the board. So, we are in a different model now for this CIP and going forward, so some of those projections at this point are out of date and now we're into a new phase and we're happy to provide information on that as a part of the update we give you.
Okay, great. I really appreciate that. I'll let my colleagues go, but if, in listening to all these people talk about all their different things, is, we had talked about, I think you've mentioned at the work session, the possibility of getting some sort of expected capital projects. I mean, it's things like painting or the security. If there are things that we know that we're going to be doing, it's kind of lumped in as capital projects because it's a different funding source, but if we could get some sort of list that people could go to and see what's potentially coming up, I think it would be helpful for a lot of schools.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Right, so that's three requests to let us know about the parking lot at Flower Hill Elementary. And then just one other issue, if we could get an update on what we plan to do about, you know, making the portables at Damascus Elementary ADA compliant, I think that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bestrick.
My colleagues have already stated this, my concerns as well, so I'm going to pass.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tindby. Ms. Wolf.
My colleagues have also identified most of the questions I have. There was one concern that was raised and I know we talked about this at our session earlier. There are short-term improvements being identified for schools even though they may be up for replacement and I noticed that some of the people mentioned that there are some things that would just make it more livable. Could you talk to that a bit?
Sure. So, as we discussed at the work session the other day, if there's a school that is scheduled for major capital work, obviously we want to maximize the dollars and we don't want to invest if we're going to be tearing something down, with the exception of if there are absolute essentials. So, if there's air conditioning that's not working, we need to invest there. If there's a leaky roof, obviously we need to invest there. There's also some work that we can do, and we've had speakers talk about this over the last couple of years. If we have a project that's scheduled not in the next year or two, but four, five, six years from now, there are refresh-type activities, the painting, some site work that can enhance the overall environment, something that we look at and that's a part of our work going forward.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you all for your comments. Mrs. O'Neil.
So, yes, I had made a note about the Flower Hill parking lot, but it reminded me of the, and then we heard it in the Whitman Cluster testimony about the Burning Tree parking lot because it has a single driveway for buses and no parent drop-off, so I wonder if you can take a look at that one too.
We will. We've spent quite a bit of time this fall doing pedestrian safety work at a number of schools and so we will take a look at Burning Tree as well. And as you pointed out, some of it is not necessarily a capital solution as much as it is an operational solution at the school and how we leverage the resources we have there. So, we'll take a look at both of these situations.
So, thank you all for your comments and questions. At this time, we will move to the next portion of our agenda where we will hear from individuals and organizations. Next up, we will hear from Norm Gordon.
Greetings.
Hello.
President Evans, Superintendent Smith, board members, staff. My name is Norm Gordon. I'm PTSA representative for this awesome community here, Neillsville Middle School. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for placing Neillsville Middle School at its proper place in line for capital improvement, namely at the top. We are grateful, yeah, that there is now a fixed date, according to the report, September 2024, for the completion of a brand-new facility for Neillsville. We understand that it takes about four years from the design stage to the opening of a new school. That leaves exactly zero months for delay. It is imperative that we stay on schedule for this 2024 opening date. Here's why. You may remember that as far back as 2015, it was determined that Neillsville needed, at the very least, a major capital renovation to solve the myriad structural problems with the facility already in existence at that time. Architectural designs were presented for three different options for such a renovation in 2015. The community was then asked to give their input as to which would most suit the needs of Neillsville. They did. However, the plans laid on the shelf and were never used as other schools' needs were prioritized. In essence, the Neillsville community has been waiting since 2015 for a solution for its security, programming, and capacity needs. Even a 2024 opening will mean a nine-year wait since any major overhaul was promised. Neillsville has had to wait too long. The truth is, we should be opening the facility this year, not designing it. Whatever the case, we know that Montgomery County and the state of Maryland will follow your lead with funding if they are convinced of the urgency of this project. I don't need to go over the laundry list of issues that plague this building. Our fine students did earlier. Let me just tell you, of one ESOL teacher I spoke with just last week, asked about teaching in his windowless classroom, one of many at Neillsville, he said, "It's October. We're only a month or two into the school year and it's already getting to me. I have to literally walk outside the building at my lunch period every day just to maintain my sanity." On behalf of the parents, staff, and especially students at Neillsville, I implore you, take the steps now to ensure that September 2024 is not the earliest, but the absolute latest date that this facility will become a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Melissa McKenna.
Good evening. My name is Melissa McKenna. During hearing signups this year, we were asked to identify with a cluster and a school. I wrote "all," never was much of a conformist. I am an eagle twice over tonight with Gaithersburg and Burnt Mills Elementary Schools, collaborator and supporter with the NEC and Walter Johnson Cluster, member of MCEA's parent committee and proud member of the Black and Brown Coalition. I'm notorious for being here for the underdog. Tonight is no exception. To echo all of Gaithersburg, yes, everything and thank you. The expiration date of 2026 for the free site for Crown High School is approaching fast and construction funds must be in the first two years of the CIP. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for including the Shell buildout above Carl Sandberg Learning Center. I'm sorry, but four years from now is too late. The 135 capacity that is planned is barely over the 100-student current enrollment. I will continue to work with county council to get an emergency appropriation to make this happen during construction. It's a matter of equity. As Mr. Adams repeated in yesterday's work session, "one size fits all" is not the best approach. Yes, thank you. So, I urge facilities management, as you are fitting out Carl Sandberg and Rock Terrace, to put the students first. Hesitating pushbars and Kevlar walls are not standard, but it's for the students' safety. I'm thrilled that Burnt Mills and Southlake Elementary Schools will be getting new schools. Thank you. However, tangible public promises need to be made to those schools that have dropped off the list, like Summit Hall, Twinbrook, and Stonegate. Investments like those refreshed Dr. Zuckerman mentioned and Carolyn Garvey described in the Gaithersburg Cluster go a long way to providing that necessary quality educational experience in the meantime. To again quote Mr. Adams, "If we can do smaller infrastructure improvements, we will do." As I feared, Summit Hall received two modular units to replace their portables, checked off as done and left. Left behind is a woefully inadequate cafeteria serving line, gym, and media center. MCPS is taking more holistic approach to future additions, however, Summit Hall must be corrected immediately. Thank you, Mrs. O'Neil, for Phase 2 concern at Woodward High School. I have attached to my testimony our NAACP ACCO students that have come from Northwood every single year from their arts magnet program. They need that space. If not now, when? I agree. Also, how can we do better? Net-zero schools. The energy savings is incredible and yes, it can be done for a similar cost to traditional construction. You'll find that in my written testimony. To paraphrase you, President Evans, we can't just do things the same old way just because we've always done them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from David Harthurst.
Good evening. My wife and I are parents of 4th graders at Leightonsville Elementary School. We were disappointed, but we weren't surprised that the superintendent rejected an LES PTA request filed last spring for a boundary study to evaluate the current middle and high school articulation for most LES students into Gaithersburg Middle and Gaithersburg High. We urge the board to reverse the superintendent's denial and approve the LES boundary study. But if the board upholds the superintendent's decision, then we really hope it's not because of the study initiative now underway as prelude to inform whether the broad changes to all school boundaries is necessary. This is unfair to current students because it will take years for any change to come from that initiative. The Gaithersburg Cluster boundary has remained essentially unchanged for decades, but Gaithersburg has not. The city's densities and development patterns have exploded and they continue to grow. My written testimony lays out arguments in support of an LES boundary study based on community identification, facility utilization, and quality of life, but at its core, my wife and I believe that the LES request is about improved quality of life for students and their families. As you can see behind me, LES sits within a crescent of multiple cluster areas, but rather than distribute LES students among them, a supermajority funnel through those clusters to Gaithersburg Middle and Gaithersburg High School. We live several miles north of Sundown Road in Leightonsville. In less than two years, our twins will face a nearly one-hour bus ride each way daily for the seven years they will attend Gaithersburg Middle and Gaithersburg High School. A long commute harms overall quality of life for students and their families. It chills before and after-school participation in sports and activities and it also triggers public safety concerns. More broadly, this board can take real action today on climate change by allowing students to attend schools closest to their home addresses because this will help reduce our carbon footprint. There are those tonight that are going to dismiss my testimony. They're going to say that I'm not changing anybody's mind and they may be right, but please, don't mistake my acknowledgement for resignation. County residents don't need an outside consultant to tell us that after 30 years, it's time for a county ride revision to our school boundaries. If there are no need for that, then I wouldn't be here tonight and we hope that denying specific boundary study requests because there's a broader study underway to determine if there's a need is really more of a delaying tactic. The time is now to make that change and if that will not happen, then we'd ask that the board offer a counterbalance, broaden COSA criteria and apply maximum flexibility in granting individual requests for change of school assignments. Please, don't follow the footsteps of previous boards that failed to muster political courage to do the right thing.
We have your in testimony.
That's a loss for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Einstein Miller.
Good evening, Board of Education, President Ms. Evans, Board of Education members, and Superintendent Dr. Smith. My name is Einstein Miller and my daughter's a kindergarten at Southlake Elementary School. Southlake is an Excel Beyond the Bell School with Action in Montgomery and we have been working together with Burnt Mills Elementary School to advocate for new school builders. You have heard over the past year and a half and especially the past two months about the needs of our schools. I would like to thank Dr. Smith and his team for scheduling Southlake as a priority in the CIP and I would like to urge the members of the board to please approve Dr. Smith's recommendations. recommendations. Our elementary school that houses 897 students has serious infrastructural deficits. We learned at our meeting with Mr. Seth Adams that elementary schools are not permitted to be constructed for more than 700-odd students. Southlake has been overcrowded for too long. An overcrowded school has had serious impacts on the facility, including strains in our plumbing system. Do you know that we have only three girls and three boys bathrooms to serve all 897 students? Do you know that if you flush the toilet close to the staff lounge, it turns the water faucet on in the adjacent bathroom, which causes the pipes to make a loud noise as though it's going to explode? Did you know that we have kept a log of all of our classrooms where there have been ceiling leaks? Our cafeteria, our art room, our music room, our media center, and our health room are all so overcrowded that everything has to be scheduled precisely in shifts. And even when we divide into smaller groups, it is tight. I'm talking New York City subway to rush hour tight. We all know you can't schedule children's illnesses, and we are entering the beginning of the cold and flu season, something my daughters and I can attest to. Our age-vax system is so strained that last week, our classrooms were at 100 degrees Fahrenheit. I am an engineer by training, so I think about design and function. Our school has been and continues to very quickly deteriorate, and the patch fixes are becoming even more expensive and ineffective. Our school has much potential precisely because of our dedicated staff, teachers, and principal. With adequate space, we can house more pre-K classes. We can house a school-based health center. We can finally have the space for our school therapists and counselors to have private conversation with students who could really benefit. Investing in an adequate building for Southlake will have meaningful and significant returns on equity in education. Members of the Board of Education, I understand the county has limited resources while simultaneously facing need throughout the county. I urge you to uphold the superintendent's recommendations. We, in turn, along with Action in Montgomery, will be advocating both the county council and the Maryland State Legislature so that our county can have more resources to address the needs throughout our county. I urge other parents here tonight to join me. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Dan Wallace.
Good evening, President Evans, Vice President O'Neill, the good board members, Dr. Smith, and staff members. I'm Dan Wallace, Chair of the Burnt Mills Citizens Association Education Support Committee. I'm delighted to be in front of you once again, though perhaps you're not as delighted to see me again. Sometimes I feel like John Adams in the movie 1776, saying over and over again, "Vote yes, vote yes." Though my mantra is, "Burnt Mills, burnt Mills." Of course, I'm referring to Burnt Mills Elementary School and its need for a new facility. So here I am again, in concert with students, parents, teachers, and Burnt Mills community members present tonight. I repeat our klaxon call for this project, because Burnt Mills has been languishing for three decades, dealing with chronic overcrowding, serious physical plant shortcomings that include security and ADA issues, and a lack of expanded facility resources to address our children's challenging demographic situations. That said, allow me to express our great appreciation for Dr. Smith's supplemental major capital projects update on October 25th. Identifying Burnt Mills Elementary School as one of the four elementary schools for, quote, "largely a replacement project that will replace most or all of the existing facility and result in a new school facility," with an anticipated completion date of September 2023. Who could ask for anything more? Well, I can. I fervently ask the Board of Education members, the Board of Education members, to approve this much-needed supplement. I also ask you to do this determined to follow through with the necessary construction funding. Finally put, Burnt Mills, Southlake, and these other elementary schools need these facilities yester now. So I urge you to consolidate your good work after passing policy FAA and supporting a major capital project program by committing to the new opportunities these finished projects will provide. I want to thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you next time.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Bob Essink.
Good evening, President Evans, members of the board and staff. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Robert Essink. I'm a strategy team member with Action in Montgomery and a member of the Cedar Lane Unitarian Universalist Church in Bethesda. I'm here tonight representing AIM, Action in Montgomery, a people's power organization made up of 30 organizations and the many thousand members of these churches, synagogues, schools, mosques, and other nonprofit organizations in our county. AIM has had a long history of advocating for our neighbors in Montgomery County. We've been key to winning the Dream Act in Maryland, over the last several years, winning over $700 million in affordable housing, and we've led the work to assure funding from the county council for the establishment and expansion of the Excel Beyond the Bell Elementary School program in 10 Title I elementary schools. As a measure of our engagement and community organization and commitment of our member organizations, there are over 180 individuals here tonight from Burnt Mills, Southlake Elementary, and our member organization representing this need. Our purpose this evening is to strongly recommend that you approve the budget for construction funding at Southlake and Burnt Mills Elementary. The members of our organizations of AIM ask that you support the superintendent's recommendation to put Southlake and Burnt Mills in the first year of construction funding as a demonstration of equitable funding, recognition of need, and investment in our students who need your support most. Southlake and Burnt Mills are the only two Title I elementary schools on the shortlist for construction funding, and both have been passed over repeatedly in previous capital and construction budgets. The parents at Southlake and Burnt Mills Elementary Schools have partnered with AIM's leadership and members because of our shared interest and a vision for a better and more equitable school system. We know that we can accomplish more for our children and our students. We also know... Thank you. We also know that Southlake and Burnt Mills are not the only schools that need construction funding. AIM will continue its advocacy with all county and state officials for equitable and needed funding for school construction. At the state level, we've held local actions with hundreds of parents to ask our state delegates and senators to support increased funding for school construction. We also are working with our sister organizations in Baltimore, Howard, and Anarongo Counties to gain their support. Action in Montgomery would like to thank you for your support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from Shola Adunuga.
Good evening, esteemed school board members. My name is Shola Adunuga, a resident of Silver Spring and a Burnt Mills parent. I am beyond honored to represent my esteemed community at this forum tonight. Permit me to state, permit me to start by stating that I have two sons in Burnt Mills, one in the second grade and the other in kindergarten. My second grader loves his school so much, as they have amazing teachers and kids. He doesn't even want us considering moving house. The second says he would love to learn every day, including weekends. Students would only say this, knowing the teachers and other students make them feel at home. I am here tonight, not only as a parent, but because I am passionate about kids and my desire for them to excel in all ramifications of life. In all, excuse me, in all ramifications of life irrespective of their zip codes. Every child is entitled to this without a doubt. Esteemed board members, I am here tonight with members of Burnt Mills, Southlake Elementary School, and Action Montgomery. For three years, I thought the portables were playhouses for pre-kindergarteners. I was in utter shock and dismay when I was informed that they were actually classrooms. I wept due to the fact that I imagined how unsafe this was, considering the violence we are exposed to in this country. These kids have to pair up if any of them had the need to use the bathroom. They walk all the way to the main building, since there are no bathrooms in the portables. This is pretty unsafe. As we all know, the dangers that they are exposed to during sort of transitions. It is worth it to know that we have nine of these portables right now. School board members, this is not the kind of structure we desire for our kids. The bathrooms in the main buildings are also way overcrowded, exposing our kids to an extremely uncomfortable situation. Another issue that makes my heart bleed is the fact that some of these kids have to wait to have lunch at as late as 2:00 p.m. The cafeteria is way too small to accommodate the number of students in Burnt Mills. We are all aware that some of these kids do not get regular meals at home. How are they supposed to, how are they expected to focus in school on their hungry stomach? A third issue is the nonexistence of central air conditioning systems in the classrooms. These classrooms rely on dated window units that are so old that can't get replaced part. As such, leaves them non-functional. These classrooms are very hot in the warm months, and air quality is very low. We appeal to you at this point to kindly use your good office and esteem positions as parents and caregivers to empathize with these kids, as they have, as they deserve a better conducive learning environment to aid their success. It's sad for parents to see that their kids, it's sad for parents to see their kids in such unfathomable situations, after working so hard to enable us cope with the high cost of living in Montgomery County, most especially for the sake of our kids. Renovating our building is long overdue. The school was built in 1964. The school system's card states that the building was last renovated in 1990, but that is a complete fallacy.
We have your written testimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Patty Peracini.
This is my first, my first CIP meeting. It's very exciting, and it's full of democracy. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and MCPS staff. I'm, my name is Patty Peracini, and I'm the parent of three sons, one of whom graduated from Blake High School last year, and two who are in 10th grade. I also serve as the Executive Vice President of the PTSA, and I'm very busy with the theater and music parent groups. Our school is the signature school for the Fine Arts and Humanities in the Northeast Consortium, meaning that students in the three high school area can choose hours if the fine arts is of particular interest to them. We are overcrowded this year, which is no surprise, given our stellar reputation. Immediately upon entering our building, you can see and hear the visual art, the fashion, the dance, the instruments, and the vocals of our students working hard. So it was with great curiosity that last month, I attended an MCPS meeting to discuss design plans for the reopening of Woodward High School, as a potential performing arts magnet school. I looked at these new, gorgeous, open-air, modern spaces meant to support a focused arts curriculum, and I thought to myself, "Heck, minus the brand-new facility, you already have a school like that." James Hubert Blake High School, a hidden gem. Tonight, you heard from three of our students who have benefited from the arts signature at Blake, and they shared their stories, but also described to you concerns we have about the future viability of our arts program. Two years ago, we put together a group of over 50 families and issued a report noting that our practice areas, studios, and significantly, our main stage are over 20 years old, are in constant use, and have become outdated and ill-functioning. We are in dire need of funding for renovation of these spaces. In our report, we stress the need for the arts in education, whether a student is studying for a career in one of its many fields, or is simply taking arts courses to balance both sides of his or her life. My 10th graders, who are deeply involved in STEM and AP, love their ceramics and tap classes the most and march proudly in the band. My oldest was a focused arts student, and as a senior sang on the grand Old Opry stage and performed in lay-mids at Strathmore with the Young Artists of America. Blake Arts prepared him well for his college studies in sports broadcast journalism. Arts programming is a vital component of a strong and diverse MCPS education. Finally, may I note that Blake is an almost 40% farms-eligible school. Many of our students have no other means to further their talents except via the school environment. Our extremely dedicated teachers regularly make sure that these students are receiving the training they need to further their future equity. For all students is an important concept in MCPS, and we illustrate that principle. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Paul Geller.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Good evening to MCPS staff, and a special good evening to everyone in the audience tonight who came out. I have two favors to ask, and if I may, President Evans, I'd like to ask the audience. I think it's really important that you realize that you're very empowered. I mean, I've heard, I was in the other room for quite a while, and I heard a lot about Southlake, and I heard a lot about Burnt Mills, and they're wonderful schools. I want you to feel even more empowered than you are being organized right now. One thing that you can do, one thing that I highly recommend that you do, is that you contact your state delegates, your three state delegates and your state senator, and let those folks know that investing in CIP projects in Montgomery County is vital to your community. For many years, I and several other people up here have been going to Annapolis, and we've been asking our state delegates for more money. It's very hard to come by. Last night, Seth, I believe you put together a good slide, and Adrian, Slide Number 11. It had a, how much the state was giving in money and what percentage of money we're actually getting. We're getting about 50% of what we asked for from the state. Now, we have a great opportunity with new leaders in the Senate and the House of Delegates to get more money. The two leaders, the one in the Senate who's now slated to be the leader, they're both pro-education. Now is a great time to ask them for more money, so I highly encourage you to ask them for money. The second request I have is of the Board of Education. For quite a while, I've been asking you to really encourage MCPS staff to open up bidding to be more competitive. Right now, we deal with a lot of companies that are close by, contractors that we've used for a number of years. I implore you, if we're going to go to Annapolis and do our thing, and we certainly need your help, we can't see the same three or four faces there. We need new faces and new blood. If we could get to have contracts from both bidders in-state, out-of-state, out-of-country, wherever, just have them bid on these projects. That's all we're asking, because it could bring the price down significantly. We don't know until we try. And I tell you that when we go to Annapolis and we say that we're getting more competitive bids, we're running a leaner, meaner fighting machine here at MCPS, to have these projects turn over and not ruining perfectly good buildings like Belmont Elementary School and just refreshing them, I think the folks in Annapolis will see that we mean business, and they'll be willing to give more money for CIP projects statewide. I have prepared written testimony that I'll give to you. What I want you to know is always, I will be there with you asking for this money, because our students, teachers, staff, and community are worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Patty.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share a parent's perspective from rural Boyd's. When we moved to Boyd's seven years ago, we didn't understand the reason we weren't assigned to the closest school to our home, but we liked that Clarksburg Elementary was a small school, and it seemed to have a low, low student-to-teacher ratio. My son is now a first grader at Clarksburg Elementary, and his school is currently at 200% capacity, which is far from what was expected. The construction of Clarksburg Number 9 was supposed to be completed by 2019, but it has been postponed two more years, while construction of homes is still continuing in nearby communities. The Clarksburg area schools are of complex nature, consisting of a diverse student body from rural, suburban, and urban communities, and it is currently overcapacity. Teachers, administrators, staff, and our students are clearly overwhelmed, but you can see they are working above and beyond. Schools with student populations in rural areas have many stops on their bus route. My son's bus ride is already 45 minutes to school. How long will it take adding another four miles in traffic? The superintendent has plans to reconstruct Neillsville by the time my son is ready for middle school. How can we be sure that Neillsville won't also be overcapacity due to a construction delay? Will my son really be getting a quality education from Montgomery County if, during his entire educational experience, his schools will be overcapacity and his time will be wasted riding on the bus? A school that is overcapacity requires a higher level of parent participation. Students compete for individual attention, personalized instruction, and the crowded and stressful environment does not promote creative expression. MCPS needs better data to make better decisions. MCPS does not consider the true diverse nature of our community, with many students coming from rural, urban, and suburban houses. from rural, urban and suburban households. MCPS has failed to build the right capacity mile or model for forecasting future enrollment. An ideal schedule is stated for the completion of construction projects for capital improvements, but it does not show the probability of it happening on schedule. With multiple infrastructure priorities, construction delays and lack of funding, what is the likeliness these projects will occur on time? MCPS needs better data analysis comparing the diversity in rural, suburban and urban households. It needs better forecasting to predict when schools will be overcapacity. It needs to stay committed to its construction timelines. It needs to allocate more funding for schools that are overcapacity and let them hire more teachers and support staff. Finally, MCPS needs to reduce the amount of time spent on the bus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Robin Ivy. So I do not see Robin. We will now go to board questions and we will start with Mrs. Smodrowski.
I don't really have any questions. I just want to say thank you again to, I know people are kind of dwindling, I want to say thank you again to everybody who came out. And if anybody's listening for the next testimony, if they could bring their testimonies ahead of time, that'd be great.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. I don't have any questions either. I was going to invite Patty Parachini to come back on Thursday nights, and she loves this so much, but she's not here. So I do want to just say thank you to all of you who are still here with us and remain at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sevesteri? No? Mr. Tinbite?
No questions. Thank you to those satisfied.
Ms. Wolf? Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes, well, I too want to thank everyone for coming down and being, participating in the democratic process. And I especially want to thank both South Lake and Burnt Mills for their joint participation and advocacy and especially for Action in Montgomery. We've been hearing from all of you for the past several weeks. And Action in Montgomery, actually, when they first organized in Montgomery County was back in the day when we didn't have all-day kindergarten in every school and they joined with us in advocating at the county council to accelerate completion of all-day kindergarten. So they long labored on behalf of children here in the county and we look forward to their continued advocacy and most importantly, at the county council to make sure this budget is funded.
Dr. Daca.
What Mrs. O'Neil said, I was going to talk about it too, but they have done a tremendous job of organizing and working with the staff and the parents and when, whenever they have meetings at the schools, there are tons of people who come out. They're reaching people that we're sometimes not able to. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we will continue with our, the remaining speakers. Now, we will hear from Jane Dwyer Maruszuski. And I don't see them, so we'll move on to the next person. Ariel Garner.
Hello. Good afternoon or good evening. It is kind of late. Sorry. My name is Ariel Garner. I'm the PTA president at Burtonsville Elementary. Thank you all for an opportunity to speak to you again. I was here about two years ago to advocate on behalf of Burtonsville Elementary along with my son, who is now in first grade, third grade, he was in first grade then. As Mr. Odunga noted, the parent drop-off area and bus lanes are in urgent need of repairs. We are a focused school in a low-income area and a number of parents are in need of financial assistance and can't afford before-after care, which leads to grit, which leads to gritlock and dangerous conditions as they try to avoid or call save and drop their kids off at school. I've seen kids literally darting across the parking lot in front of cars and buses and our kids are constantly late for classes. We also are in desperate need of repairs to our HVAC system. In 2017, we resorted to funding to repair our HVAC system and each year it seems to be delayed and delayed and delayed. I've witnessed kids that are in their portables wrapped up in blankets. I've had to send a blanket for my child as well versus on the other end of the hall there and they're extremely hot. We are concerned about space utilization for the cafeteria. We request funding to approve our playground, which desperately needs resurfacing. And, see, I was doing an abbreviated version for three minutes. So according to MCPS's Schools at a Glance, B, Burtonsville Elementary is projected at future capacity for 749 students and right now, we're at 610 and we don't have any more space. All of our classrooms are taken, all of the portables are taken. Provided that the constraints already present with parking lot safety, poor HVAC systems and core facility capacity at the current enrollment, we are worried that as the community grows and we get closer to the 749 projected capacities, if these additions aren't addressed now, we will further put our children at risk. We understand that BES has requested funding for several years to address the issues and it's alarming that we still don't have a projected timeline for when funding will be allocated. During the walkthrough with Dr. Suckerman, he recognized the need for improvements, but again, could not identify a funding timeline. Please accept this request for more financial transparency and communication with our school community. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Omatayo Daniels.
Hi, my name is Omatayo Daniels and I am a county delegate with Burtonsville Elementary PTA. We have a lot of working parents who come together throughout the school year to make things work. Although Burtonsville Elementary is a wonderful community school, there are things that we as parents can't address. One, as mentioned by Ariel, our HVAC system, we have children who've been experiencing temperatures of 40 degrees, they're wearing coats, parents are providing blankets and in other areas of the school, you have students taking off their shirts and they're in t-shirts because the other part of the building is extremely hot. The gym is also in need of some repairs because of a lack of proper ventilation. We can't host our graduations within the gym. Also, it would, with the gym being repaired, it would give us an opportunity to have certain assemblies that don't interfere with our lunch system. The children are often complaining about not having enough time to eat their lunch. Students are eating as early as 10 o'clock in the morning and other students eating as late as 1:30. Also, the other issue is safety. We would like cameras in the back of the school where the portables are. We have our fourth and fifth graders coming into the building alone, which in this climate at this time is extremely unsafe for them. Also, lastly, I would like for money to be found or allocated in order for our students to participate in innovative STEM programs such as coding and robotics to give our students the same opportunities as other students and other consortiums within Montgomery County. And lastly, I'm going to end with some letters that were written by students at Burtonsville Elementary. The first letter says, "Help Burtonsville Elementary." Says, "My name is Ashton Matthew. I'm in the third grade at Burtonsville Elementary. I would like to ask you to please help fix my school. My classroom gets so cold that my mom had to send a blanket so that I can stay warm. When it is so cold in my classroom, it's hard for me to listen. Third grade has been hard for me because the math is harder and it takes a long time for my friend, and it takes a long time for my friends to get to lunch. There is nothing to do on our playground. Please vote to help my school so that I can learn better and have fun with my friends." School Improvements by Roy Ned and James Craig. "Our, our school, Burtonsville Elementary, is a great school, but not perfect. And if we want to be stars, we need to improve. First, we, we think that the lunch should be healthy and better cooked. We say this because the children at this school deserve to have food that they actually like besides, as well as recognizable food. The kids at this school also deserve safe, to be safe during recess." Well, we gave your testimony.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Kelvin Halli?
Ely.
Ely? I was going to say that.
Good evening to Bryton and Dr. Smith, President Evans and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Kelvin Ely. I am the proud parent of a 10th grader at Springbrook High School and currently the PTSA president at Springbrook High School. The PTSA has been working alongside Principal Dr. Arthur Williams and is keen to advocate for what's in the best interest of our students at Springbrook High School. I plan to make a number of requests this evening, which I hope are reasonably asked for endorsement from this committee. I'm here this evening to bring attention to a list of capital improvement needs that will help enhance and make Springbrook High School a more attractive choice for students within the NEC and seek your support for the inclusion of Springbrook's needs in the next capital improvements program budget. I would like to bring your attention to a number of upgrades that are urgently needed at our school. The auditorium lighting. The lighting in the auditorium does not meet requirements to enable Springbrook to be a testing center, resulting in additional lost opportunities. Springbrook High School has increased the number of AP and IB administered exams by over 43%, and with increased testing and the removal of delayed openings, we need to be able to administer these exams in rooms that can hold large groups. The auditorium is a suitable place, but the lighting does not meet the threshold that is required to administer academic testing. The improved lighting will also provide enhanced experience for multiple-purpose use of the room for drama and other activities. Renovation of the locker rooms. This is a health and safety issue. We desperately need the sewer lines and plumbing to be repaired and upgraded in the locker rooms. We currently have raw sewage coming through the locker room floors, which is unsafe and poses a health hazard for students and staff. We need this to be a top priority. We appreciate the facilities team coming out on a number of occasions to clean up and make short-term repairs. However, there needs to be a comprehensive plan to address this urgent issue so that the physical education classes and athletics are not prevented from using this area. The locker rooms and team rooms need new locks due to broken doors, rust and broken hardware unlockers. We need locker replacements in the team room and main locker rooms, an artificial turf stadium field. This will help bring us on par with other schools in the NEC Consortium and all schools in the Consortium, enhance student safety and allow each county to have a field that benefits members of the broader community as well. We'll also allow the physical education department to have a safe space to teach sports and ensure that we can have more teams back on campus for after-school practices. Currently, this is being done on off-site campuses. Replacement of the library skylight. The replacement is tentatively scheduled for the summer of 2020 and has already been pushed back. This area of the library needs to be addressed urgently to avoid ongoing leaks and water damage that has resulted in inability to use a section of the library for several months. We need this work to be prioritized for completion by this summer. Several staff members have also experienced damage to their vehicles as a result of the poor quality of the parking lot. This has impacted staff morale. There are a number of potholes and areas that are uneven that present hazards, especially in bad weather. I want to end by thanking you for your time and consideration of Springbrook's needs. We look forward to your support. A number of these is listed in the testimony that has been provided to you. Thank you very much, this evening.
At this time, we will hear from our last speaker, Lisa White. And I don't believe that she's here. So what we will do at this time, I will open it up for board questions and we will begin with Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. Could we, Dr. Suckerman, have a written update through the transmittal, you know, that comes to us on Fridays related to Mr. Ely's concerns at Springbrook? Appreciate that. And also, just in terms of Burtonsville Elementary, can we get some heat for the kids so that they don't have to bring blankets to school?
We will. We'll provide you, we'll provide you updates on both. Obviously, we'll have somebody out at Springbrook right away if there's a, if there's a concern of sewage, that's obviously an immediate issue. And I just, did just want to let you know that on the December 3rd board agenda, we do have an award of contract for the Burtonsville HVAC upgrade and obviously, we'll take steps in the interim to address issues while we work on that long-term project.
Great. Thank you. That sound good, ladies? Yeah? Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Sevesteri? Or is that, were you finished, Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Your light's still on?
Sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Sevesteri?
Nope, just the same comments, HVAC system and the need to Springbrook.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tinbite? All right. Ms. Wolf? All right. Mrs. O'Neil?
Yeah, can we add the Burtonsville parking lot situation, parent drop-off to the group of schools that have issues to be looked at?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've looked at that and we will, we will continue to look at it. Part of it is, again, part of it is an operational issue, just where parents drop off around the building and then kids walks around the side. So it's something we have to work on with the school administration.
Okay. And the other thing is, again, you know, I agree about the sewage backups in the Spring, in the Springbrook locker rooms, but also about the lighting in the auditorium, because that seems very problematic and a disadvantage to Springbrook students not to have testing in there.
We'll, we'll provide you an update. We'll examine it and get back to you.
Dr. Daca?
Oh, Ms. O'Neil, that all the things I wanted to say, but the auditorium can be very grim, even for activities and doesn't have to do with the testing, but the skylight is another issue. That's one of the highlights of the building and they have a lot of events in that lobby, so anything we can do to keep that as an attractive place would be great.
Mrs. Smodrowski?
Yep. So everybody's pretty much touched on everything, except for one little thing. At Burtonsville Elementary School, they mentioned about having some sort of special program. I know this is more of a Dr. Navarro or Dr. Smith, but is there, if opportunity, we could look at something like that?
Absolutely. In fact, we're already working to extend STEM programs and computational learning, computer science programs across all elementaries. So that is being implemented, you know, as we speak and getting across all 136 elementaries. Will take a little bit of time, but my goal is that by the end of the year from next school year, we will have a, something in every elementary school in this area.
That's great. I really appreciate that.
Elementaries and middle schools, both.
Okay, cool. Well, maybe we can prioritize.
Thank you. So seeing no more questions and we're coming to the end. Dr. Smith, did you have any closing comments?
To those of you who are still here tonight, a very, very sincere thank you for your support for children and learning and teaching and opportunity for every single student in Montgomery County. Thank you so much.
So with that being said, just want to let everybody know that on Thursday, November the 7th at 6:00 P.M., we will be here again for a facilities boundary hearing with the Forest Knows, Montgomery Knows and Pine Crest Community to come and speak to the board on the boundary changes. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.